Councilwoman Perot, can you hear us now? Okay.
Ready? Council called this meeting to order for the, for the record, it is May 18th, 2021 at 4:31 PM. We will begin this afternoon's City Council Work Session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Perot.
Here.
Councilwoman Perot, can you hear us?
Here. Can you hear me?
We're not hearing you.
You can't hear me? Um. I don't know. I'm here.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, I can hear, I can hear Councilwoman.
You barely.
I'll see what I can do to fix it. You can't hear me at all?
Mr. Mayor, may I start again?
Yes, you may start.
Councilman Borton. Councilwoman Perot.
Here.
Um, she is here. We, I will contact IT to see if they can fix that. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Byrne.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
There are no changes to the agenda, so I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second to motion.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next item is consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
It is my honor to ask that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I'm also honored to second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda honorably. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, one last thing.
Councilman Byrne.
And I would like to add on to that motion that you signed it and the clerk attested.
Uh, second agrees.
We, we have motions with seconds, amendments, agreements. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so we will move right on into our department commission reports. And the first item up is Meridian Public Works Week proclamation, Public Works Department. So if I could get the Public Works team to join me at the podium for the reading.
Jessica. Can you test, test in your mic?
Yes, can you hear me?
So. I believe everyone can hear you except for in council chamber, so we're going to get that fixed. Thank you.
Council, um, we are, believe it or not, here for Public Works Week. Normally, we'd have a lot more stuff visually going on, that you'd see people moving out of the parking lot and big machines coming in uh, on this, this Tuesday. Um, but instead, we're doing it virtual this week, but this is actually real time for those that are paying, playing along at home. So we're going to do a proclamation, then we'll turn it over to Dell and his team for some comments about this week. So whereas city of Meridian residents have peace of mind with every faucet turned on, shower taken, and toilet flushed, thanks to the professional employees of the Meridian Public Works Team. And whereas each unseen essential worker, engineer, inspector, operator, technician, is committed to protecting our health, safety, environment, and quality of life through the supply and distribution of clean, safe water, efficient collection, and treatment of wastewater and management of solid waste. And whereas the dedicated public work staff and partners design, maintain, and sustain the quality of these critical services and important infrastructure, recognizing their ability to do so depend on having the support of informed citizens. And whereas the Meridian Public Works Department educates the community about the work they do both in person through their daily work and virtually through informative and engaging public outreach. And whereas stronger together is a theme for the 2021 National Public Works Week, and it represents the many facets of modern civilization that grow out of the efforts put forth by the public works professionals across North America. Therefore, I, Mayor, I, Robert E. Simison, hereby proclaim the week of May 16 through 22, 2021, as Meridian Public Works Week. In the city of Meridian, call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the vast and complex efforts involved in providing our public work services and to recognize the substantial contributions which public works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Day to this 18th of May, 2021. So congratulations to LT and your team as we are here for another Public Works Week, and I will turn this over to you for some comments.
I do have just a couple of comments, but uh, thank you very much, Mayor, for the acknowledgement. Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to join you here for a couple of minutes here as we uh, kind of uh, look at this year's Public Works Week celebration that we've done every year. Um, I want to thank Emma and Suzie, who are co-chairs uh, for our activities, and uh, they put together uh, in, in light of not having a live event, uh, you know, kind of some virtual activities that we have going on this year. And we'll talk a little bit about it, but Public Works Week was started back in 1960. And uh, today is celebrated by approximately 30,000 public works professionals across the country as a way of acknowledging their uh, contribution to uh, our communities today. This year, as in every year, there's a theme. This year's theme was stronger together, and I think that's really appropriate as we look back at the past year and some of the challenges that we've uh, overcome. This is the 13th year that Meridian has participated in um, Public Works Week, and although um,
Yes.
it's in abbreviated format this year, we do have some kind of fun virtual activities going on, and I hope you've been able to maybe catch those. And if you haven't, I would direct you to Facebook. Uh, we have a number of video shorts that have been kind of put together, introducing a little bit about the department and then hitting some of the areas of responsibility that maybe don't get as much highlight um, as, as our basic water and, and wastewater production type areas. So hitting areas like pre-treat, trash and recycling, um, our location services, which uh, appropriately are painting our city one stripe at a time um, out there in the streets, uh, highlighting some of our engineering efforts that uh, don't normally get it. So those are released every day. They started on Sunday. They'll be going through the end, into the week, and I invite you to go out on Facebook and Instagram and uh, and view those. Likewise, uh, tomorrow, um, as a way of showing some appreciation for our staff and the utilities and here at City Hall, we're treating the employees to uh, to a lunch, so we have a little luncheon tomorrow. We traditionally have always had a barbecue following our normal Public Works Week, but uh, so we have a nice uh, nice luncheon to show our appreciation. And as traditional, we have uh, generated a commemorative coin for each of our um, Public Works Week activities. And so Suzie and Emma have got one of those for you. And uh, we also give these to all of, all of our Public Works employees, and we also give them to all of our sponsors that help put on what are typical events that we have each year. So um, please uh, enjoy that. And uh, we hope that next year we can return back to our normal events with uh, tours and expos and and golf tournaments and uh, those kinds of things. But uh, I do appreciate the, the mayor and, and council acknowledging the uh, essential workers in uh, public works. I think we, our slogan, we were essential before essential was cool. So anyway, thank you very much.
Councilman Cavanagh, Councilwoman Perot, can you test your microphone, see if we can hear you at this point?
Hello?
Hi. No, you can't hear me?
I can hear you, Jessica. Can you hear me?
Yes, but I don't think they can hear us.
I don't think they can hear us.
But I know that YouTube watchers can hear us.
Okay.
Uh, Mayor and members of the council, thank you for giving me a few minutes to update you on the results of our 2020-2021 odor study for the wastewater treatment facility. So first, I think it's important to give you a little bit of context about what an odor study is and what it can be used for. So odor studies use EPA-approved air dispersion models, which utilize local meteorological data, so wind speed, wind direction, and temperature, as well as odor sampling values to predict several things. They'll tell us the highest odor value um, under worst-case conditions. They'll also tell us where that odor is expected to go and how frequently that odor is expected to be there. So it's important to note that odor studies are not perfect. They do include a lot of assumptions, like local weather patterns, what equipment will be installed and when. And they also predict worst-case conditions, so they take the hottest, windiest day with all process equipment online, which may not be what is actually experienced in the field, but it does show you what the worst case could possibly be. They also predict total odor, not just bad odor. So obviously odor is very subjective. Um, we have, for example, our Headworks has a raw sulfurous, raw wastewater smell that's more offensive perhaps than our aeration basins, which is a more earthy, um, generally non-offensive odor, but the odor study is going to show you total odor, both good and bad. So what it's also not going to do is tell you exactly how to set land use boundaries, but it'll hopefully give you enough information to feel comfortable setting reasonable land uses around the wastewater plant. So I need to give you a quick update on how we got to this point. So in 2002, the city established the current land use boundaries around the wastewater plant. In 2004, Public Works conducted the first odor and noise study. Uh, this study was based on a lot of theoretical assumptions. It used a build-out planning window of 2023 and act, and only used one actual odor sample. So without any additional information, though, those land use boundaries have remained in place. But now that we're nearing the end of that odor study prediction window, we wanted to complete an updated study using better, more up-to-date information. So we completed the study in August of 2020, which again helped us predict worst-case conditions in the heat of the summer. We also modeled it with all plant equipment online, which will be uh, actually occurring in 2024, and we took 47 actual odor samples. So we also uh, took the opportunity to look at future facility build-out through 2074. So odor studies give you two values. The first value is the peak odor value. So this represents the highest detectable odor. But it's important to know that these peak odors could also last for just mere seconds. So a DT or detection threshold of seven would be considered background condition, so smells you would get from soil, trees, and plants. The second value, or the orange rings, is going to give you odor frequency contours. So these show you how often an odor is going to be perceived above a set threshold in detectable hours per year. So this shows us more persistent lingering odors, and it's a little bit easier to view and interpret these graphics as percent of hours in the year. So on our next graph, we converted it to those units. So you'll see this graph is, it shows the current conditions at the wastewater plant. And what you'll see is that residential development is generally allowed in the 2% to 3% contour lines. To give perspective, 2% of the hours in a year is equivalent to approximately eight days out of the year. And it's important to remember that these values are total odor, not just bad odor. So what we did is we modeled to show the results of what do these contour rings look like with some of the planned odor control projects that are in the current CFP that we plan to construct in the next one to four years. So what you can see is that it pulls those odor contour rings in even further. So based upon the information and the new odor study uh, with the planned odor control upgrades installed, the Public Works Department is recommending that the city could modify the land use designations around the wharf. We would recommend, however, that we keep uh, non-residential land use restriction around the wharf to an interim 900-foot non-residential buffer, which would allow the city to install the planned odor control upgrades and reevaluate the odor profile after these upgrades are complete. Um, but in order to ensure that we are not making decisions today that may have negative future impacts, we also looked at a full facility build-out, so this is estimated to be in 2074. And what we can do with full odor control installed on all applicable future projects is we can really pull those odor contours in even further. And so that shows that by installing that technology with our projects as we put them in, we can continue to grow the facility and support additional development in the areas around the wharf. So one of the good things is future odor control equipment can be phased in. Um, and so it can be uh, constructed based on actual field conditions, maximizing the city's investment so that we don't over or underconstruct the necessary odor control equipment as the facility continues to grow. Um, so with that, we just wanted to remind you that the odor study is not perfect, but it does give us the best information to predict the worst-case conditions and helps us make appropriate land use decisions around the wharf that supports the interests of the facility as well as the surrounding neighbors now and into the future. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Laura Y. Council, do we want to take a recess and reboot the system so that those remote can, can weigh in at this point in time, real quick? Okay, so we're gonna, we'll go and take.
Councilman Cavanagh, Councilwoman Strater, can you attempt to speak? We may have fixed this. Garrett, Jenny, Kyle, can any of you try to test your microphone, see if we can hear you?
This is Garrett. Can you hear me?
Okay, thank you, Garrett. I see you're talking, but we don't hear you.
This is Kyle. Nothing.
I can hear you, Kyle, but I don't think they can.
Well, Garrett, maybe we ought to have our own little meeting.
Hey, can I join you guys? We'll have our own.
Mm-hmm. Probably get done faster. Now that was probably.
Can you hear me now? We can hear you. But I don't think they can in the chamber. Okay.
Councilwoman Cavanagh, Councilwoman Cavanagh, Councilwoman Perot, can either of you test your microphones?
Test one, two.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you both. Can you hear us okay?
Yes.
We'll, we're starting in a moment.
Okay.
Thank you, Council, for, we'll go, come back out of recess, but appreciate us getting that set up. So, Council, any questions for Laura Y?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Um, thanks a lot, Laura Y. One question I had, I, I know they model the existing conditions, but it surprised me that it's an ellipse and not like a circle. I was just curious.
Yeah, Councilwoman Strater, Mayor. So that actually is a result of the prevailing wind patterns. So um, they use uh, what's called windrows, and they, they go in that sort of oblong shape, and so that's why the odor dispersion model goes in that direction rather than just a circle pattern.
But your 900-foot buffer, you recommend that, I, I assume, all the way around the site?
Uh, we, we do generally from, so that um, change screens, but um, generally from the existing wharf property boundary about 900 feet out. Um, would at least give us the opportunity to install the technology that we have planned for the next few years, evaluate what that looks like. Um, eventually, that could potentially uh, be reused as well, but we'd like to see what, what those technologies actually do to in-field conditions.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Council. Councilman Borton.
Laura Y, I assume also this study is then utilized by our planning department or notify landowners, all application. Incorporate these results as part of the.
Um, I, uh, Councilman Borton, I believe it, it should be. Um, I, I think the next step would be as development applications come in for your guys' um, approval
Laura Y, is it the intention then that if maybe council accepts this report, including the 900 foot buffer, and then if that's the case, is it then the plan to send that notification to the surrounding landowners so they're informed of this action as well?
So Councilwoman Cavanagh, that's a great question. So I think our, our next step, assuming that we have the general consensus of this body would be to involve the, the city's land development planning group. And yes, send out notifications to those property owners that there's a potential change in restriction or I guess lessening of restriction.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any further questions? Okay.
Thank you, Laura Y.
Thank you, Laura Y. The next item on our agenda is Meridian Dairy and Stock Show Annual Presentation to City Council. And this is sort of Hansa Mike, if you would come forward and say your name and address for the record.
Mike McGurdio, 2623 South Hillis Place, Meridian Idaho, 83642.
Hans Bruin, 6627 Airport Road, NAMPA 3687. And I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for inviting us to talk about what happened last year and what we're planning for this year. Even though most of dairy days was canceled last year, we still had the opportunity, and I'm not sure how the slideshow worked, to put on the show for the kids, both the dairy cattle and then the dairy goat show, we moved everything to the infield of the Speedway. So we still, they still had the opportunity to show their animals and their hard work. And then we did award quite a bit of scholarships last year, almost a little over $10,000 worth of scholarships. The new one we did, and you can see that that went through the state FFA Foundation, we awarded six scholarships there. And when we're looking at giving out scholarships, one of the criteria is to support the young people in this valley who want to pursue an education in agriculture, especially the dairy industry. We're really concerned about the loss of farmland in this, you know, not just Ada County, but in the valley. So hopefully, we can support these kids to get an education in agriculture, come back here and help wherever, wherever they get, can. Do a picture on the, that'd be the right, is the Charlie Stevens Memorial Scholarship. We've given that away for about 10 years now. He was a dairy farmer on 10 Mile in Franklin. And last year, what we did, the recipient in the picture, that's this year, but last year, we have four applications, so we decided, there are $1,000. So we decided, with everything going bad for those kids, we decided to award $1,000 to all four of those kids.
Wow.
And so that's why, you know, we went over $10,000 worth of scholarships. And Meridian, the Meridian Dairy Board, the Meridian Dairy and Stock Show, we're a nonprofit organization. We make our money from, you know, Rent Now, the Speedway. We hope generally to break even on lost to, or not lose too much money for dairy during dairy days. This year, we actually hired, and I think some of you are familiar with Eric Colley, to sell sponsorships, and he's been very successful. And we hope to double, maybe even triple the amount of scholarships we can hand out. One of the big sponsors came on board, Stadia Fiber, for, as our host sponsor. Not only do we give out scholarships, but we also help FFA for each kid that go to either state or national conventions, you know, open up financially so they can, so they can do that. This year, and we've got several other great sponsors that came aboard to help out. So that brings us to this year, we've got a few new events to add to it, the big one, and it's highlighted there, it's, we had hoped started last year, didn't work out, but it'd be our first annual Keith Bird Memorial Golf Tournament. I do not golf, so I'll be at the dairy cattle show, but I think Mike, Mike will be there and, and I don't know.
They're filling up really quick, we expect a full turnout, so it's pretty exciting what, what's being put together there.
And then the other thing that's kind of new, you know, we have, of course, we got a carnival coming, and our big problem always is to get people to stay in Story Park, to come to Story Park, so they eat at the food vendors, they spend money at the carnival because we get a percentage of that. So the more we can come, more people can come, the better it is for the whole event. So we added several music concerts this year, Thursday, Friday, we have, we look for bands that have a local following, you know, so I think one or two are actually out of Meridian, but they're all out of the Meridian Boise area, and hopefully they'll bring some people with them. And then Saturday, most of the day, we've got different entertainers coming to Story Park. The Meridian Parks will put on their cornhole tournament. That's on Saturday, I believe, Friday, Saturday. That's, that's some of the new things. And then, of course, the, the big one, the most headache for everybody, the most fun for a lot of people is the, is the parade. We moved that to Saturday, that was 2019, that went over really well, it did add some additional concerns. But as you can see, we got specialty construction to take care of any traffic control. And every year, like everything else, you know, price kind of goes up. It went up quite a bit this year, and that kind of had to do with the request from Meridian Police to get more, to do, kind of do away with volunteers at the different intersections and instead have official flaggers there. People seem to pay a little bit better attention to somebody in official capacity. Though we really appreciate like the Kiwanis that have done it till here. That's why the price has gone up. And then today, I found out that ACHD would prefer that those flaggers stay. We've got the price at three hours, they prefer them to be there for at least four hours. So that would add an additional $750 to the, to the quote. The issue or the problem or the question I think we always have is, who decides what's enough? Who decides, you know, obviously, it's not us because we don't know anything about traffic control. So we asked the specialty, construction, ACHD, and even more important, Meridian Police Department, you know, what is their input? What would they like to see? And that's kind of what we're, what we're following, and unfortunately, that makes the price, the price getting up. The, maybe you could talk.
Yeah. So what we found is, we establish every year, at the end of the year, we establish what risk we observed throughout the parade. And we try and every year, better that to where we have less risk every year, but then we add additional expensive cost. So we had a suggestion with the, the tape on the parade route to control traffic. We presented that the specialty, they don't do that. So then we had the debate whether we do it or whether, you know, we tried to flank it to specialty, but it really, we're not qualified to do that because if any instance happened, we, we would be held accountable for that. Or we're not trained, we, we didn't want to do that. So we came in a situation where we seen kids, you know, where we stopped, you know, the, the throwing of candy because the candy would land next to the trailers and, and vehicles, and kids would run out, and you're constantly having big trucks and stuff trying not to go underneath the, or stop for kids doing that. So it's this debate of how do you do that? Well, we tried to enforce handing out the candy, but that doesn't always happen. So we go back and forth of what are the things can we do to keep kids safe? So we talk about the tape, well, then who's qualified to do the tape? So we kind of go back and forth in this deal of trying to prevent people getting hurt, but yet also, you know, keep this cost to where it doesn't become out of control. So there's that risk we try and establish. But we also get input from Meridian PD and, you know, many, many other people within the city trying to establish what the proper thing is. So that's why we kind of put it up, you know, to this point here, and then we opened up for discussion for the caution tape and other incidents such as extra flaggers to make sure that the flaggers came in when volunteers couldn't officially tell, you know, a car to stop or whatever, all they could really do is stand and make sure they didn't go past the barricades. What was happening is they were driving past it, and there'd be so many people flocking in, and then you have cars trying to back up down these narrow tight, you know, backroads in Meridian. And again, it's a pretty big risk. So we thought, yeah, that's a really good idea because we seen a lot of near misses. So we thought that was appropriate. But again, it kind of goes into that debate of, you know, how much do you do and how much you not doing trying to keep everybody safe and have a good parade.
So I guess one of the questions is, because both Meridian PD and the fire department thought that tape was a really good idea and that they seemed to work where it was in 2019. I think the question and maybe Meridian Police, who, who do you think is the persons or who puts up the tape? Specialty construction will not do it.
Or who makes the call, you know? That would be the question. And I will say this, you know, the Parks Department, Meridian PD, everybody has done a fantastic job of planning this. I mean, we have meetings, you know, weekly right before the event and then monthly leading up to it. And they are very proactive of being there on time. I know that's time out of their, their day, and we really appreciate their and value their time. It's been really good to work with them. I think that was all we had, but those were the things we wanted to kind of ask you to.
Counsel, any questions or if we'd like to hear from Mr. Leslie on this, his viewpoints?
I guess I have a couple of questions, Mayor, in regards to the tape. Is that tape, it's going to go down the roadway to prevent kids from coming out too far in the roadway? I wasn't part of that conversation. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I think that that's something we could assist them with and direct them where it needs to go. They obviously know where the risk points are at from the ebb and flows last year, year before, and we could assist with how, how and where that goes. We don't see why that would be a problem for us. I'm not worried about any risk or concerns from our perspective. That's what they're looking for in guidance and where they want that to go.
Mr. Mayor.
I don't think they, I don't think they were looking for guidance, I think they were more looking for who's going to do it and who's going to pay for it. So I, I, my, my opinion is, I mean, that's just, that's a massive expense. Isn't, you know, I get there's always risk and reward, but isn't that like the parent's responsibility to watch their kids on the side of the road? I mean, that's the best solution. I mean, parents, watch your kids. There's a parade going on, there's moving vehicles going down the road, watch your kids. And if that can't help, I mean, I just don't, I find it hard to pay for that. At least the city, that's just, that's, that's, that's going to be a massive expense, whether it's time or resources, I guess that's the same. Maybe another idea would be to have maybe a couple of people that enter, you know, for every float, maybe have a couple of people, you know, that, that's provided by the, you know, the individual entry to have people watch sides of their vehicles to make sure that, you know, kiddos are safe and there's no one out, you know, running out in front of cars or behind cars or so on and so forth, that's just an idea. But that's a big, that's, that's a big cost. And honestly, I don't know if tape is going to stop a kid from going to grab a piece of candy that's, you know, that's three feet in front of them. I don't think they're going to stop at the, at the, at the tape line when that piece of candy is a foot beyond it. I think they're going to, I think they're going to go after regardless if there's a, there's yellow tape there. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I was at a couple of the meetings for the permitting processes went through, and the Ada County Highway District is very opposed to tape for similar reasons, as President Byrne has stated. It really doesn't effectively prevent people from crossing it. And secondarily, it doesn't assist sight impaired people that are out at the parade because they can't, they can't see it. So they obviously get tangled up in it or they could step into it. So they were not supportive of tape as a, as a means of crowd control that they like, again, having volunteers, it hasn't been as effective because people sort of ignore volunteers, people that look like they were officially part of security of some sort for the parade flaggers and those kinds of things. People tend to give them a little bit more authority, so that was kind of why they wanted to have flaggers instead, barricades, some types of bike racks and things like that as barricades were better impediments. We didn't discuss having people essentially as sort of runners alongside of the floats, but I mean, that does sound like that could be effective. I don't know if, again, if every one of the entries has the ability to do that, but that certainly would be helpful to have that. That might be a better use of volunteers, is there really just kind of protecting the parade itself, not trying to control the crowds in the street? But they were definitely, ACHD was definitely opposed to tape.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Mr. Mayor, maybe their question for Hans or Mr. Nary is, I was under the impression the highway district was requiring the tape. So if the highway district isn't supportive of it, is it the city of Meridian that's requiring the police tape?
It was suggested by the Meridian Police Department in 2019 to try candlesticks and tape. We, they ended up not bringing us enough candlesticks, so not the entire parade route was covered. This time in the quote, it gives, there's like 300 some candlesticks. The tape, we'd have to buy separate, and I believe we paid like $250 for that in 2019. But, but you are correct, ACHD was not, was against the tape, it was Meridian Police and Meridian Fire said it probably be a good idea, is what they said. But it, it does create a lot of extra work. Who take, who puts it up? Who takes it down? Because you got to follow the parade right away, you know, taking down the tape because as soon as the last entry goes by, you know, people, and, and you are correct, it will not stop any kids. It's, they see it as a suggestion, maybe.
See the hubba bubba they're after.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Your intention is to stick with having people hand out the candies though and not throw them? Do you think that that helps? You'll stick with that at least to try to.
It 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 was suggested by the Meridian Police Department in two thousand nineteen to try candlesticks. And and tape. We, they ended up not bringing us enough candlesticks, so not the entire parade route was covered. This time in the quote, it gives there's like three hundred some candlesticks. The tape we'd have to buy separate and I believe we paid like two hundred and fifty dollars for that in two thousand nineteen. Uh but but. You are correct, uh ACHD was not, was against the tape. It was Meridian Police and. Meridian Fire said it probably be a good idea is what it said, but it it does create. A lot of extra work. Who take, who puts it up, who takes it down? Because you got to follow the parade right away, you know, taking down the tape because as soon as the last entry goes. By, you know, people go and and you are correct, it will not stop any kids. It's, they see it as a suggestion, maybe.
See the hubba bubba they're after.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Um, your intention is to stick with um having people hand out the candies though and not throw them. Do you think that that helps? You'll stick with that at least to try to. Keep the kids from running in. I think that makes sense and it seemed like that was effective. More effective, do the best that we can. Yeah, I don't think the tape, the tape doesn't really sound like that workable of an option. Um, so we'll have to, you know, parents, please, you know, make sure you're watching your kids too.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
So um having started my term on council in January twenty twenty, this is a brand new conversation for me. And I was wondering if there are particular areas along the route that that happened to just be kind of problem areas. Uh where we might be able to utilize some of those um suggestions in just particular spots that are more narrow perhaps or where. Um, there might be safety concerns versus other areas of the route.
Uh, yes, there are uh. In downtown uh Meridian where the those center flower, those big flower pots are. That's has become quite a problem for the parade because we have to. You know, guide them to the right, everything gets narrow, then the people. They just crowd in onto the street. So that is definitely. Uh section that we have to watch and then there's a few uh crossroad we've. One of the things we've done and and that worked really well, we're coming out of the Speedway onto a Main Street. We've made that a no uh candy zone. The the problem was because we, you know, we have some big tractor and trailers that are moving into the parade route there. And there's nothing worse than people, you know, crowding and and. You have to really watch those those kids along those, you know, those big tractor and trailers and that has really helped. We did that for the first time in two thousand nineteen. So we'll keep doing that.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I hate to belabor the point about caution tape. I I I take the recommendations from. Our Police and Fire Department serious and I think the council summarized it, we're not going to get in the way of a of a little kid in a candy bar, but I'm curious if. Police and Fire have any other alternative suggestions where we can meet the community safety needs, but also maybe. Again, I I'm not an expert when it comes to this, that is maybe more operationalized to make it a little easier for the Dairy Show Board to deploy.
Well, you took the words out of my mouth. Um, I don't know how often council wants to start getting into making determinations about. Where we're putting that caution tape for community events in Meridian, so. Um, that I really think this is an appropriate conversation really between the applicant for the parade and our public safety. Personally, but. I I think it's been an informative discussion. Councilman Horton.
To tie a bow on that point and wrap it up, I agree with all the comments. I think that the tape is more problem than it. It's intended to solve councilman Schrader's comments, applying the rule of of walking, not throwing seems to be a good. Little ground solution to make it as safe as we can. Parents, parent, watch your kids, be safe. Participants can also take a little ownership and help that endeavor as possible. A personal responsibility everywhere. Or today, it, and maybe that's coming next, but isn't there recall, be asked, the financial contribution and. Tape's not part of it. Maybe that's the next piece, but.
Mr. Mayor, yes, that's that's part of why I threw that in there is because it's the debate of whether you approve the price at specialties. Bid that they put in place or you leave it open to a budget. Um, in place of the bid. So we have some flexibility to work with Meridian Fire and anything that comes up between now and then.
Mr. Leslie, do you recall what the amount is in the budget or Brad? I think that there was a. Email this week I was searching for and it did not pop up.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mary.
I I did reach out to Todd LaVoy, our CFO, uh before the meeting to verify what the current budget is and the current budget is five thousand dollars. The only thing we've ever paid for is the traffic safety plan. So everything else has been absorbed through budgets uh or department budgets for overtime. And the fee waivers are are already in place and a code, so we have currently budgeted five thousand dollars for this.
Council, I guess that's what you're being asked if you're wanting to do more than what is currently in the budget. For this parade or not.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Morton.
For twenty nine, remind me what we did in twenty nineteen, I guess the last time we had a parade. Wasn't it, wasn't it a sharing of those costs? Which led to the the budget figure.
So, Mr. Members of the Council, in the package you have a a a breakdown and a memo. So in twenty nineteen, there was a six thousand dollar cost for the traffic control plan. The price had gone up slightly from prior years because of the change of the route. And so there was a little bit more necessity for some barricades, some of the other things we've just talked about. So the price was up and I think it ended up being just a smidgen or that fifty eight hundred dollars or something like that. The other costs associated were. The staffing, the overtime, the fee, the permits and things like that. So total city contribution, including. The budget for the traffic control plan was eleven thousand fifteen dollars and eighty six cents. But again, most of that was absorbed through overtime. So the only hard cost was the cost of the uh the traffic control plan. So that's. Asking for essentially a ten thousand dollar uh budget for this year.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
I did request for the same effective participation from the city is. We cover those hard costs, just the hard costs have gone up. Sixty nine hundred to eighty nine hundred?
That's correct.
Right, okay.
In in two thousand nineteen, the Dairy Board uh paid for the extra flaggers from a different company. And that was about, I believe, thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars. Uh, because that was kind of a last minute deal that Meridian Police said we really need. More professional flaggers there and and that was not in the original quote from specialty. That's why, and it's in there now.
We we footed the bill at or in two thousand nineteen for that. And then we, because we didn't get it in in time for approval for you guys beforehand. So we came forward beforehand this time to be more forefront.
Council, additional thoughts, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Just my comment, I think the council has said that we've been supportive, that this being a historical event to support the. The traffic safety or the public safety element of the parade. Um, recognizing that we knew the cost would eventually go up and not down. I'm supportive of this, this increase. I guess I just don't know in terms of if the rest of the council feels that way, what that process would be in terms of. Do we need to do a budget amendment or how that would, how that would need to work out?
Yes. That's the direction.
Mr. Mayor.
That's on Burt.
I think I'm in favor. I mean, this uh as this as this parade grows and as our community grows, it's going to get bigger. Um, I uh I I don't see. I support the a a budget amendment to cover the difference. I don't have a problem with it.
If from a practical standpoint, can we ask the police to put into their budget for next year amount that. We think would cover costs and not come back to do, or do you want to have this conversation every year about what the increased? Amount of specialty construction is.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
That's a question that I was pondering pondering myself. I think that is part of our budget process this year. If we want to increase that amount to, you know, from five thousand to nine thousand or ten thousand to. Eliminate that need for the Dairies Show Board to come before us. That said, I like hearing from the 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 show board and hearing what they've got lined out. Um, whether it's either before or after the event, so. Regardless of the direction we would go, I would still hope that we would have a mechanism in place that we could hear from the Dairy Show either before or after Dairy Days.
So with that, uh, Mr. Leslie, if you can work to bring back a budget amendment with your team. Since I hear you're going to be here with us next two months, so it'll probably be yourself next week.
I can do that, Mayor.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Next time on the agenda is Finance Department in this impact analysis of House Bill three. Three eighty nine. Turn this over to Mr. Brad.
In the house. In the house. I brought my fancy binder too. Thanks, guys.
No, it's all up here. You don't need the binder, it's all.
We're we're good to go. Oh, we're here to to talk about House Bill three eighty nine, uh what the impacts of that uh to the city are. Um, I believe that begins with our forecast, what we've we've built into it. You, I believe you guys have received an email from our CFO, Todd LaVoy. Which um basically says in in, you know, back in January when we balanced our next ten year CFP. That we did it based on a really conservative forecast. Um, you know, we heard from Bob McQuade and as a result of that, uh we were increasing our our revenue. So. The bottom line, uh the impact of HB three eighty nine is is not a negative one for us because we have a conservative forecast. And as such, um we're actually increasing uh the revenue. I think by what, two point uh three million dollars over the next ten years, uh two hundred and eighty thousand in FY twenty two. As a result of that, uh we are not proposing to take the three percent um because we're reaching that eight percent gap in two thousand twenty two.
Hold off on that part yet. We got to see the numbers.
Yeah, as we get more information, we can, you know, bridge that uh conversation. But the the bottom line uh is we're actually increasing our revenue projections um based on what we're hearing. Wow, any questions about that?
Can counsel, if I if I could just add in before we go into some questions from a practical standpoint is. I I I believe in in looking at this, so long as we are willing to stick to where we view growth as a priority in our community. We will be able to provide services with what we have planned in the CFP. Based upon what three eighty nine. Is forecasting for us. Yeah, that there are limitations. I mean. In theory, we are limiting ourselves up to one point five million that we would not be able to take. This year because of the bill. So i- it is changing what our. Ability is to go out and if we do need additional revenue. Especially if we take on additional growth in areas where we were not planning to do so. So I I think this is really, you know, I I've had conversations with several other mayors. Who have taken much different steps during the valley or are considering additional steps, both maybe. How they look at development today, what type of conditions they place on development in the future. And but if we keep an eye on where we grow and how much. Because that's really what will become if we start seeing abnormal growth years much higher than was projected. That's when we really would need to be taking a look at where we are, especially if it's not infill, if it's on the the edges and it's coming in much more. Much faster than we anticipate. But we've done a good job of generally predicting the last several years to kind of see where we're going. The values this year is really what through this. In a little bit different area, as long as our our permits. The number of homes, number of commercial in the right areas where we can provide services. We should be able to meet our service level expectations moving forward. Um, without as much concern as some of our, the other communities in the valley which have real tangible concerns. So with that, any questions? And we do have Mr. LaVoy on as well, just to in a little bit more relaxed atmosphere.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Um, thank you very much, Brad, and I appreciate the the commentary on the priority growth areas. I guess that was going to be my question would be. What are the guardrails to keep us on track so we don't end up in a situation that smaller cities have found themselves in? Um, or maybe put a different way, you know, we get the, we get updates from community development. Is it going to be possible to get? Maybe a quarterly report comparing our growth to projections or just some way that we could keep an eye on this to make sure we're not. We don't end up in a situation like a huge fumble at the end of one year where we have tremendous growth and we find that. We're exceeding that cap. It seems unlikely, like your projections have been really accurate, but how do we kind of like keep a pulse on that?
Brad, I'll take that one if you don't mind, because I I think it really, you know, probably the best way is really to hear from our CFO when he does his quarterly. Updates to incorporate those elements in if he's if he's seen. Numbers of values which are beyond the anticipated projections. You know, like I say, the one thing we can't control is what the assessor assesses things at. And even when we go through the process each year, what we approve or don't when that comes on. And I think that's one of the things other cities are looking at is how do they, is there a way that they can manage when things come on to the system? As compared to, you know, you approve things, you get extensions and then one year everything shows up. Um, how can you uh do that? But I I will ask their CFO to. Incorporate looking at those as he brings his quarterly financial reports to the city council. Um, if there's anything abnormal and what they're seeing from a growth perspective. Because he is in charge of the Growth Management Committee. Councilman Holton.
I I just wanted to double check, Brad, on this legislation because there are several earlier versions and it impacted urban renewal and. Amount of taxes that once they come back on to the role that couldn't be taken. I don't think I saw anything in this legislation related to that. Is is that correct?
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Holton. Uh, there is a piece on urban renewal, I believe. You know, maybe it's best if I get back to on that. I think it's acceptable, but I, we can, we can get either the financial or the. The truth on versus me saying what I'm, what I believe I remember on that. But if you're talking about urban renewal, it is addressed in 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 that uh legislation. I can get that to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep, we hear you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Holton, I can confirm that the previous. Documents that you're referring to regarding U R D, the latest legislation does. Uh, have a little bit more relief in the um valuation of when the U R D does expire. Uh, improvements were made uh from the old legislation to the current. I believe it's still at an eighty percent value. We'll continue to look at that as we have our first U R D in about five years. Uh, that we'll have to consider, but we'll continue to look at it. Uh, but the improvements were made to the previous legislation, Mr. Holton.
Yeah, Mr. Holton, I think it's it's a eighty percent value, but it does not count towards your eight percent cap. It's a separate total calculation.
Correct.
Councilman Burt.
Um, not a lot to say. I I I just think going forward, we really need to pay attention to our growth and. And where we're growing and 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 really concentrate and not like we haven't been doing this prior to, but smart growth is essential. It's it's really important. Um, and just, you know, with these quarterly reports, making sure that we're we're in. Uh, a solid conservative financial position. I think that's. It's uh what we've done in the past for decades and and I know that going forward we'll continue to do it. And so. Um, I I met with the the Builder PAC um a couple of weeks ago and their concern was we, you know, that we. I think we owe it to the development community and and to the builders and our our partners to make a decision, make a sound decision quickly. Um, and to be consistent in that in that decision, just so that they know where we're going and they know what um our direction is. So I I think that's, we can just provide some clear concise direction this evening. That would be. Really appreciated to many.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Brad, I don't know if it's a question for tonight or at a later point in time. But we see with some frequency, you know, an annexation comes in and maybe even a preliminary plat comes in. And then not a lot of action. And so how the council can kind of rectify what has been annexed versus what is going to be built within a year? And what, again, if any impacts that has on. Growth and 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 the property tax calculation. I think Councilmember Byrne hit the hit the nail on the head. We need to be probably clear and concise and consistent. Um, but understanding how an annexation versus something that's actually being built will impact that, I think will be helpful for me.
My 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 advice to um council based upon the conversations is. You know, I think if we we keep an eye towards what some of the other cities are are going to be looking at, you know, I think that they're going to be building some. Um, I'll call mousetraps, there's some things for us to look at and and we can determine whether or not they provide value in the. some things for us to look at and we can determine whether or not they provide value in the future and how they're looking at these items. And, and then on the second part is, you know, to councilman President Burns' things is like, I think if the development community brings us projects that are in areas where we are planning on growing and providing services, my, for me to them is, we can, we can accommodate that in my opinion. You know, but that also depends upon future budget decisions the council makes each and every year in the services. That can always have an impact if we don't extend certain services or if we don't take the funding for those services. So yeah, it is a little bit a year, a year at a time, but at this point in time, I feel comfortable in conveying to this council that we can move forward with the projects that have been before us, let them all stand on their merits about whether or not there, now is the right time or not for the city, but it doesn't have to be a postponement on whether or not we will be able to serve them because we won't have the financial ability to access the dollars we need to provide those services.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Barrett.
So I believe what you're saying is that going forward, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to not pause or take away the pause or eliminate the pause that we've put in place going forward with regard to legislation that was, that was passed and signed by the governor. And going forward with what you said, let these applications stand on their own merit. And whether or not we approve them.
So that would be my recommendation for 6:00 PM this evening.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holgland.
To follow up on that, we are making plans and looking at two fire stations, police precincts in North and South Meridian, Northwest Meridian and South Meridian. So it sounds like from Brad's presentation that funds would be available to continue those moving forward. And if applications are coming for those particular areas and we are looking at providing services, we can, as you mentioned, consider them on their merits, possible inclusion into the city and, and building. It's just outside of the boundaries of those areas that we have been planning for quite some time is where it gets problematic, it sounds like.
Correct? That's what my caution would be to the council at that point in time is extending to an area that's not adjacent, well, it's always got to be adjacent, but you can tell when it's going to be a bigger stretch.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you. I, you know, think it makes sense to stick to our priority growth areas within this framework and get the quarterly update. Seems to make a lot of sense to end the pause that we had implemented and just consider applications as we normally would, normal course of business. But I would appreciate an update on the urban renewal piece. I think all of us probably share some concern about that. I just, we have several that we're considering and it would seem really prudent before we consider those further that we really understand the long-term impacts of the legislation with regard to that specific topic.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Barrett.
With regard to the urban renewal districts, those, those wouldn't affect the city, just to be clear, until those urban renewal districts sunset. So that's what, that's what those, the current legislation signed by the governor would implement.
And not to be a pessimistic, but I think the legislation signed by the governor, when those urban renewal districts sunset, will not be what it is. That's just my pessimistic view of the legislature and urban renewal. That's very different conversation.
Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, I agree with my fellow council members regarding our approach to reviewing and voting on our applications and moving forward, taking, you know, taking, how do I state this, just proceeding as, as we were prior to this, this temporary pause. Question I have is, is there a way or a method for us to potentially be more communicative? If we're not already with our projects that are many years out, several phases. So for example, we have a project, we're hearing this meeting that's nine phases. I would imagine it's probably going to take numerous years. And so do we have a way to sort of estimate that, that cost of service to the city over that period of time? I think we, we have multiple of these types of projects that are years long. So is there a way for us to sort of estimate those things as we make the decisions on an annual basis?
Mr. Mayor.
You can try. Go ahead, Mr. Lavoy.
I could try. Regarding any fiscal modeling that you're referring to, Jessica, I can inform you that there is a Treasure Valley group that is working on a fiscal model that would assist with what you're looking for. You know, we don't know the success of it yet, still being developed, but they are trying to develop a model that will allow you to see the expenditures and the revenues associated to all projects that would help the decision makers to determine whether or not the project is fundable for X amount of years. It's a very difficult thing to do, given the vast components of a project, but it is something that we're working on. We do not have anything in our playbook. We just utilize dwelling units, multifamily housing and population to determine our budget plan and our tenure CFP. And we budget according to those needs based on those projects. So again, not sure if that helps you, but again, that is something being worked on by a group within the Treasure Valley team and compass. And we will be providing updates for you as soon as that gets closer and closer for actual use and examples.
And I think just kind of again, piggybacking off that, I think what you're, what you're hearing is, there's going to be a lot of people in the Treasure Valley talking about this issue for the next several years and trying to get their arms around what it means. And different sized communities have different impacts. So not everything that one community does is going to be applicable to each. But there, there will be conversations among CFOs, amongst attorneys, amongst community development professionals, amongst elected officials, as we try to navigate the impacts and what this means or what additional impacts mean next year, as that may be. So it's an ongoing conversation and decision process.
Mr. Mayor, it sounds like we have consensus, but one last comment. I, you know, I made a comment in the statement that I made months ago in regard to the desire of the city of Meridian to have a seat at the table in these discussions, whether it be a working group before this next legislative session or if legislators that represent Meridian or not have questions in regard to how this really affects local government. I wish that, I continue to ask them to reach out. Our door is always open. We're always willing to discuss and know that we'll reach out to them as well. I think that, I don't believe that this, this topic is going to end because of what was signed and by the governor last week. I think this is going to be ongoing. So know that the city of Meridian is willing and ready to have these discussions going forward.
Here, here.
Counsel, anything else? All right. Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Mr. Lavoy, for joining us on your vacation. Appreciate it.
No problem, guys. Have a good one.
Hit them long and straight, buddy.
Thanks, Mayor Council.
Counsel, with that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Barrett.
I move that we adjourn.
I get the motion.
I have motion, second adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 A person name, if you guys have it, we are adjourned.
Council, we will call this meeting to order for the record. It is Tuesday, May 18th, 2021 at 6:02 PM. We will begin this evening's regular city council meeting agenda with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Huglan.
Here.
Mayor, Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next time is the Pledge of Allegiance. If we all please rise and join us in the pledge. Our next item is the community invocation, which will be given by Pastor Drake of Calvary Chapel Meridian. If you'd all please join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection.
Council members, Mr. Mayor, would you join me? Lord God in heaven. Just come before you here this evening in this great city and we just appreciate just remembering the privilege that we have here in this country of being given life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And we're grateful for those people who've gone before us to that had the genius of that and then those who've defended it over the decades for us, the centuries that we may live in a free place. And so, God, we just want to acknowledge that and thank you for preserving that for us. And I'm just praying for the citizens of Meridian tonight that they might be safe and have a place to go. If there's trouble or any needs, poverty, hunger, homelessness, I just pray, Lord, that people can find their way to have their needs met. And we're also asking for a special protection over the safety of our citizens this evening. So important to all of us that people can live safely. And so we pray for those servants who provide protection for them, the first responders, our paramedics and fire and police officers, please protect them, Lord. And lastly, God, and not least, I just want to pray for our city council, all the people that work in this building, that you would give them just a lot of grace and encouragement and wisdom and how to handle the affairs of the city. And we just appreciate them, God, and ask that you would bless them for what they do in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you.
Council, next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
No changes to the agenda, so I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second, the motion.
I have a motion, the second, to adopt the agenda as published. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor signified by saying I.
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 Opposed, nay. Guys have it and the agenda is adopted. Mr. Corks, do we have anyone to sign up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay. So with that, we will go right into our action items for this evening. Our first up is a public hearing convened from April 13th, 2021 for Prescott Ridge, H2020-0047. I will see if Sonya has any comments she should like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Council heard this project on February 23rd and continued it to the April 13th and again to tonight's meeting in order to determine the potential impacts of legislation pertaining to state Senate Bill 1108. So council has already heard staff's presentation on this. I'm not going to go into that all again. I will just remind you that council does need to make a determination in their motion in regard to the specific use standard for hospitals that provide emergency care. The location has to have a direct access onto an arterial street. However, however, because the UDC prohibits new approaches directly accessing a state highway, no other access is available except for North Rustic Oak Way. The north-south collector's street along the east boundary of the site, which connects to the highway. Council should determine if this meets the intent of the requirement. If so, it should be memorialized in the development agreement. If not, council may deny the emergency care component of the hospital use. ITD has denied the applicant's request for a direct access to the state highway for the medical campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for staff? And is the applicant with us and make any additional comments?
Thank you. My name is Patrick Connor. Address is 701 South Allen Street, Meridian, Idaho. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight, Mr. Mayor and council members. It was nice sitting in on the workshop previous to this hearing and hearing the conversations that were happening happening about how do we grow, where do we grow? And how much do we grow? And I fully agree that we need complete projects that are smartly designed and are bringing all the components of the comprehensive plan. And I truly believe that Prescott Ridge is that project. So you've seen this a few times, but here's the overall layout. I'm just going to briefly go over the project as you've heard it a couple of times and then talk a little bit about the economic impact of this project to the city of Meridian. Majority of the project is a single-family residential. We have a component of townhomes and multifamily in red. Medical campus is about 15 acres on the north side that abuts Chenden. And then part of this application is the West State School parcel for your future middle school. It was part of an illegally subdivided lot before, so it's been part of this application and part of this plenary plat. So you've seen this before as well, but this is the site plan for the medical campus. Just a couple of things I want to point out that I believe Stephanie did at the last hearing. The preferred emergency access per the city and the fire department is in the northwest corner that connects to Trinity Lane. That is how we're showing on this plan. There are also all alternative baggage road stub here on the center of the west side, which goes into an existing residence in the county. We also have a alternative 20-foot fire access through the south portion of the property through our cul-de-sac. So there's multiple options for baggage road and for emergency access. I think during the conditional use permit process, we can decide which one is the most appropriate as we engage with this particular site plan further. But I wanted to point that out. Next, I just want to talk about some of the economic impacts of this project. First, the residential piece. Each home in Prescott Ridge is going to bring in $857 to Meridian in the form of property tax revenue. This is after the effects of House Bill 389 in assuming an average household value of $450,000. So at buildout for 355 homes, it's equals over $300,000 in annual property tax revenue to the city of Meridian. For the 14 multifamily fourplex buildings, each of those is valued at about $1 million, which would bring about $2,636 in property taxes. Altogether, these 14 multifamily buildings would equal 30, over $36,000 in annual property tax revenue to the city. So total, the residential impact of this project is $341,000 annually. And this is based on a conservative estimate of $450,000. Over time, we assume that those properties will escalate. So as I said, the average home in Prescott Ridge is 450, paying $857 in property tax each year. If you look at the city overall, Meridian, the average value of a home there is $360,000 and pays proportionally $690 in property tax. So even with the effects of House Bill 389 in reducing the amount of property, amount of value you can levy for property tax, Prescott Ridge Homes actually bring in $167 more or 20% more revenue to the city Meridian for the same level of public service that they would be needing from a residential standpoint. Next, the medical campus. The best way I can describe this medical campus is it's a major tax benefit for the city. At buildout, the medical campus will be $180 million in value. So each year they'll bring about $474,000 to the Meridian property tax revenue. This is roughly the same as the value of 553 homes valued at $450,000. So it's a significant tax benefit for the city on just 15 acres. Not only that, it'll bring high earning, high-earning jobs of over 300 employees. 70% of those are either doctors or nurse or nurse practitioners. And the annual payroll is expected to be over $24 million. So you can think about the economic benefit is more than just the property tax revenue. It also brings in jobs, high-paying good jobs, and you think of the induced economic impact from that standpoint. So we believe that the campus, this medical campus is a big asset to this plat. It'll be an anchor of economic activity. It'll support further economic development in the area. And with that, the area of Chenden 16 and being a new magnet for medical services, we think that's a a big net positive for this project and for the city of Meridian. So as far as new information that's been presented since February, that wraps up what we wanted to talk about tonight. And any questions you all have, you can stand for them.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
One question. Will these homes be owner occupied?
Yes, I'll point out, most of all of them will be owner occupied. The exception is the red multifamily you see in the northeast corner. Those are intended to be a rental product. They'll sell as a single building of four units in the building. And then they can lease or they can live there if they want. The owners, it will be maintained by a central property management company. But that, the red portion is intended to be multifamily and rental product. Do you want to follow up?
Councilman Burnt.
The buildings are there in the red 14 and there's four, four units per building, so it's 56 units total.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
Thank you for your presentation this evening. I have a couple of questions for you. The first is, did you take into account in your property tax estimates, which really appreciate you doing that analysis for us? Exemptions, homeowners exemption, which just increased circuit breakers and things like that, was that a part of your calculation? And then also, I noticed from the original plan until now, there's been some significant changes to the amount of townhomes and some of the multifamily that was estimated. Can you kind of go over for us? It sounds like there is a decrease to the percentage of residential in the overall project and increase in the commercial. Can you go over the reasons for that change and help us understand more what the thought process behind it?
Sure, Councilwoman Perro. So to first answer your question, yes, we did take into account the $125,000 homeowner's exemption for this analysis. So that is included in both what Prescott Ridge Homes would be paying to the city in annual property tax revenue. And when I compared it of the existing homes in Meridian, that also received the $125,000 property or homeowner's exemption. So thank you for asking that question. I can clarify. Also, your question about the changes in numbers of townhomes and multifamily. We, when we first submitted this application last April, we did change the layout of this townhome layout here. It didn't change since we presented to you all. We changed this for this, our second P and Z hearing. There's 46 total townhomes in this particular area, but we had not, we have not changed that since we presented in February. The same with the layout here of the multifamily. We changed this layout a little bit and we added a park to be used by the multifamily area. And we added a And we added a male kiosk. Do some, some good suggestions from the council on how to make that area better and more equitable for, from a livability and a recreational standpoint. So that's the only changes that we made to the multifamily between now and, and the February presentation. The number of lots hadn't changed either. And then the medical campus, the, we did add retail and hos- and and hos- or restaurant space to the bottom floor of the medical office building per suggestions of the council. So the whole bottom floor of medical office building is the mixed-use retail component. And the top three stories are strictly the medical office use. So that's the only thing that changed throughout this public hearing process. But the plan that I'm presenting tonight has not changed in the, in the square footage count of commercial space or the number of lots for multifamily or for a townhome.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Connor, and appreciate you bearing with us through so many meetings. And apologies on the impact to your business from this legislation that we've been grappling with. Question for you. So one of the things we really need to figure out tonight is the emergency care component of the hospital specifically. And, you know, this is not the typical access that we would want for that. And I know this is supposed to be outpatient. I'm trying to wrap my head around future uses of this hospital building. And I guess a question I have that Councilwoman Perrow brought up, and I believe our last meeting was, are you open to a limitation, to some extent, on your operating hours in order to get that emergency access, you know, that access that you need for the hospital component would be my question.
I am not the hospital operator, obviously. Perhaps Betsy Hansicker can chime in. I think she is online or able to do it. But just a quick, some flavor I can add. You are correct. It's, it is designed to be outpatient operations. So they don't want to have too many people spend the time over there. They want to cater towards women's health pediatric services. The actual free standing emergency room that they have there is necessary per federal law, given the level of surgeries that they're going to be doing in the building. So it's not intended to be, it's not a trauma hospital. They're not going to be bringing, you know, helicopters and critical things. They'll, they'll go to St. Al's and St. Luke's. So I, is, is Betsy online that she can chime in?
Mr. Mayor, I did admit Betsy. She should be able to unmute or turn her camera on if she chooses.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hi, my name is Betsy Hansicker. I'm with HCA Healthcare. The free standing emergency room project is a fairly important part of our, our campus. And although if we don't, like Patrick said, you know, over the, you know, we do intend to, to, you know, focus on other services. But that is a part, is
Council.
Important part of access.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't need it.
Provide that level of care.
Hey, Betsy.
Can you hear me?
Not, sorry.
Yeah, you're going in and out. It's speeding up, slowing down.
I'm sorry. I'm okay. Well, I'm driving. See if I can change for me. Is this better? Can you hear me better now?
Much better.
Yep.
And if you can start from the beginning, Betsy, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me better now?
Not now.
Now? I think you can hear me better now. Yes. Okay. Well, I don't, uh, how about, I, I can pull over and see if that, that helps me. I'm sorry. Let me just, I, I'm trying to get my children to different places. Um. Hold, hold on a second.
That's okay, Betsy. Be safe and maybe.
At a later point in time.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, maybe I can explain my question more in the meantime.
Yeah. No, no, I'm here. I, I had you answered.
Okay. Betsy, well, we'll come back to you. Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, ma- maybe just to, just to sort of flush it out a little more. I, I guess one of the concerns I would have for, I understand that you're operating this for outpatient only and it's unusual, but hospital ownership does change. That can happen. And so one of the things I'm curious about is if a limitation in operating hours would fit with your business model and wouldn't be an undue burden to you if you're able to still conduct your business with a limitation in the operating hours. Maybe that would be a good trade-off to get the emergency vehicle access, you know, for the piece of this that you need for ambulances. That's all. So maybe if you guys want to have your team visit with her, and we'll circle back. But please don't, yeah, don't do anything dangerous while you're driving. Thank you.
May- maybe for just to help in the conversation when she hears it. Do you have hours of restriction in mind that you think are appropriate?
Hi.
Sorry, Betsy, we still can't hear you, but I, I, off the top of my head, something that would go along with what you would expect in terms of a noisy business. So I was going to pick nine PM, ten PM, but I'm just guessing. I asked the planning staff if they have a suggestion, and Councilwoman Perrow may have ideas too. She had this concern as well in our last meeting.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, but right, commercial or are no noise ordinance, six to eleven?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that's, that's the current noise ordinance for operations.
So if those are the type of restrictions versus something more, I guess that would be just for flavor.
Mr. Mayor? Is this a, could this be a discussion during the conditional use permit process that we can talk about more? And perhaps Betsy can have a better idea of how operating hours would affect her business?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Schrader.
I, I think the concern there is we need a decision from council tonight on giving you your emergency vehicle access. And city council, from what I understand, is not part of the full CUP process. So I'd be concerned that we're, you know, kind of making that decision without the agreement on your end. I, I'm only speaking for myself. I don't know if the other council members are thinking along the same lines or not, but I had that concern and Councilwoman Perrow had mentioned it. I was just wondering if there's something that fits with your, with Betsy's and the team's business plan that, that might help alleviate that concern.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Perrow.
Um, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Schrader for bringing that up as well. And part of the conversation last, last meeting was about the hours in regard to not only the ambulatory services, but also, you know, basic hospital functioning, cafeteria hours, loading, unloading, and that kind of thing. My question, whether for Mr. Connor or for Betsy, help us understand, so it sounds like there's a requirement for there to be emergency services. Is this going to be an emergency service room similar to other, whether it's on a smaller scale than the, the other area hospitals where the public can come in at any point and receive service? So, or, or are you saying that this is specific to the patients that are being treated there? And it's that, that emergency service is, is only for those people that are currently under the hospital's care? If this is a public emergency room, which my understanding is there's intended to be one that's just to the north on the hospital project that's designated on the north side of Chenden, then that, in my opinion, is a really important part of this conversation as far as access goes. Because that means then, you know, that ambulatory services need to be available twenty-four hours a day. So if you could give us clarity and understanding how that is actually going to operate, that might be helpful.
Yes, Councilwoman Perrow, Councilwoman Schrader. She does, we're text messaging with her trying to get information, but she's trying to call back in. Definitely wanted her to be safe. So she absolutely needs emergency services in order to provide, like we've established. We're trying to figure out if it needs to be twenty-four hour. My understanding is that it would function similar to like a primary health. So it would be open for someone to get stitches on their finger if they need to, someone, it's not strictly for patrons of the hospital. It's for the general public. So it'd function as similar to a primary health or a dock-in-the-box, something to that effect. My thinking is she probably will likely need twenty-four-hour services. I, I don't know. We're getting clarification because there may be a situation where somebody needs to stay overnight, especially if they need to stay overnight, they need to have, have emergency service there. I do know from, I guess, just a nuisance standpoint for ambulances coming in and out of the hospital. They do have no lights, no sirens policy within a certain distance of the hospital. So that's something they can abide by. I know they do it nationally. If, if that's a concern of, of, you know, bothering neighbors or having that sort of issue there. We do have the significant buffers of our hospital from the neighboring properties. We have an eight-foot-high masonry wall to help dial back on any sort of impact the hospital will have. And like she said before, typical office hour or hospital hours between seven AM and three PM. So when they schedule the surgeries. And so the ambulatory, ambulatory care is pretty limited. So hopefully we hear back soon if she absolutely needs the twenty-four hours. I think she's on the.
Hi, this is, this is Betsy again. I, I'm, I was driving by my office. I pulled in. Can you all hear me now?
Yes, we can.
So I, I'm really sorry that I wasn't able to wait, you know, my phone signal was not working very well. So I, unfortunately, we absolutely have to have twenty-four hour access. That is a critical part of the business plan. It's a critical part of the operation. It's a critical part of the access. Like Patrick said, the, you know, it's not going to be a trauma center. It's, we, it's, we're not going to have a helipad. We're not going to have, you know, we're not going to be receiving helicopters, obviously, without a helicopter pad. And we, we often in other, in other places, we often work with ambulance companies to not use lights and sirens coming into the facility within a certain radius. And so we do work with the, the EMS providers to minimize the noise and the nuisance. I guess I'm, I'm a little confused. You know, I, I didn't realize, you know, I thought we were planning to use the ambulance we, we designed, the emergency service, the emergency room area to have the main access point off of the Levi Lane Road. I know it has a new name, but I can't remember what that Rustic Oak, I think, is what that's called. So that's how we designed all that ambulance traffic to come in and out. And my understanding was that the other access on the frontage road would only be for emergency ve- like city emergency vehicles, not for ambulances and other emergency vehicles that are accessing our facility.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, Betsy, so you know, our, one of our transportation departments here denied access off of the main highway there. So you, you're asking for access off of Rustic Oak. This doesn't meet the standard on an arterial. This is a collector. And so that's why the planning staff was directing city council to look at this. And I guess my question to you would be if you could explain how this is different than a trauma center? And if you have a way to help us understand if there's something in your development agreement that could give us some comfort in the future that this wouldn't become a future trauma center if the ownership were to change or the business were to change? You know, maybe it's that you need the ambulance access twenty-four hours a day, but that you're going to schedule surgeries during certain hours. Or maybe that you're not, you know, tell me what the difference is with the trauma center. Maybe we can wrap our heads around it. My only concern really is just if this turns into ambulances running through here really frequently and they're very noisy. And it sounds like you can mitigate that, but give me a flavor for how this is different from a trauma center and how we could feel better about it, I guess.
Well, I mean, I guess if you look at, like, let's just use West Valley as an example. And I think this would be a, you know, a smaller emergency room than what West Valley has currently. And we see around seventy patients a day. And I think we have about, about ten ambulances a day here. And what we've, what we're expecting in this, what, what we're thinking in this location would be a volume, you know, kind of closer in the twenties, in the thirties per day. So, and, and typically, you don't have emergency, emergent EMS. So, you know, Ada County paramedics typically doesn't bring patients to kind of smaller facilities. They don't have as many services because, because typically they end up having to transfer them again. So they tend to avoid, you know, they had, so they tend to avoid kind of facilities that have more scaled-back services from an emergency standpoint. You know, I can't guarantee, I, I can't, you know, sort of, there's no documentation of that or, you know, policy around that. But that's typically what you see. But just to put it in perspective, so if we're seeing seventy patients here with ten ambulances and we're talking, you know, a third of the volume, you know, best, you know, best case, three ambulances a day. And that would be, you know, more of a steady state, kind of that there, you know, there'd be some ramp to get to that point. You know, certainly, so a trauma center is actually a designated thing. So you, you actually go out and get designated as a trauma center. The state has a trauma committee. Or trauma, that's not the right, they have a, well, yeah, they have a state committee that sort of evaluates different hospitals and kind of gives them a trauma level status. So we don't anticipate, you know, pursuing that for this project. And that has certain requirements. So there's certain requirements that go with that, like you have to have different specialties on hand. You have to be able to accommodate, you know, blood bank and other things that go with being a trauma center. But at the same time, if you have someone that lives in that area and their child falls at, at eight PM and they fall on their elbow and they need to have surgery and get a pin put in that elbow, they may potentially go to the operating room and have the pin placed, you know, at nine PM in a facility of this type, if there was, if there were ORs and emergency room, because that's a fairly minor, you know, that's not a major procedure. And, you know, it would be kind of a disservice to that family to transfer them somewhere else for something that could be done there. So I think there's scenarios where that actually benefits the community by being able to take care of that patient kind of locally and close to home. So I don't know that I'm totally answering your question. I think, I certainly think that, you know, it's not our intention to make this a kind of a regional emergency hub, but I think that there's, there, there's a lot of growth in this area, you know, at least there has been up to date. And, you know, so there, there is a need for those services, you know, for, for that kind of care. And I think it's a service to the community versus a detriment to the community.
Thank you, Betsy. I think you, you answered my question and I appreciate it. I guess it sounds, if you could just explain if it's the size of your facility that by definition, you're looking at three ambulances, like what aspect of your facility is the limitation? Is it the size and services you provide?
Yeah.
I guess, okay.
Yeah, I think, yes.
Are, are you okay with saying that you're not going to pursue becoming a trauma hospital in the future? Since that's within your control would be my question.
Um, I think we could say that. I mean, I guess I would like to have the ability. I mean, you know, like picture this area in twenty years, you know, is it going to be a different story or thirty years or forty years? So I guess as long as there's some ability to kind of revisit that, if, if there's a need in that area, then I think that that's okay. You know, I hate to do something today because it doesn't seem necessary, but in twenty-five or thirty years, you know, it is something that really the community needs and deserves. So I, I don't see that being an issue at all right now, or even in the near future. But I would, I guess I would just want to have some ability to leave that door open down the road or some process to be able to, to be able to open that door back up down the road.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Schrader. Okay, Councilwoman Perrow.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's a little delay sometimes. So thank you, Betsy. Thank you very much, by the way, for pulling over and, and taking time to answer our questions. This is a really critical part of the conversation.
Well, it's important to us, to me too. So I, so I'm glad I was able to do it.
So just, just to clarify a couple of things. First of all, I, I don't know that, that our council is, is questioning the merits of the hospital or questioning that there is a need for hospitals in this area. It's more goes back to this road, the road not having the capacity for ambulatory services to the code that's The road not having the capacity for ambulatory services to the code that's currently required for it to exist. So we're not, at least I'm hearing from my fellow council members, give me, give me just a second. Let me finish. What I'm hearing from my fellow council members is, is not that, that we are, you know, needing, needing you to, to convince us that a hospital is, is a good thing in this area. But this is really more about some technicalities regarding what is typically permissible for ambulatory services on a road this size. And if, if you would like to leave that, the option open for this to become a trauma center, that's not going to be feasible possibility for you if this road stays at this size. Now, I don't know if you, if you, your design team, your engineering team has considered the possibility of, I don't think actually ITD is going to allow an arterial off of this. Is that the reason why we're, this is set up as a collector? Maybe staff can answer that in a moment. But the other thing I wanted to state is that, is that this, as you mentioned, this area is growing and we have two highways, two state highways at this intersection. And we also have a city that's north of here in it, that has almost no medical services whatsoever. A very small hospital, they have very limited, and I would guess that this is going to become a main location for them for ambulatory services. So if there's an accident on Highway 16, this is the place that they're going to be bringing somebody who's, who's rapidly bleeding, right? I don't think they're going to drive him into Boise or drive him into South Meridian. And that's just my guess. So that's the kind of things forward, forward looking, future looking that think myself and Councilwoman Schrader are, that's kind of the point we're trying to get at.
Well, I would, I would say, you know, out here where I am in Caldwell, you know, we have some pretty significant accidents on some of the major highways out here. You know, fatal accidents or, you know, near fatal. And in those situations, those ambulances bypass West Valley and they go into Boise to St. Owls. So just speaking from, you know, actual, the actual experience out here, they do bypass. So I think it does depend because those, because we're not able to meet the needs of those patients here. So, and, and so, so just as a, as a point of, you know, anecdotal, an anecdotal point, so.
Just mayor.
Councilman Holman.
Just, just weigh on, weigh in on this a little bit and maybe hopefully provide some information, do my previous job that I had with the, one of the regional medical centers. Yes, the time sensitive emergency system in Idaho is administered by Department of Health and Welfare. And they can designate trauma centers based on criteria and different, the requirements, if you meet the requirements. And so it is some, and so the St. Alphonsus Regional Medical Center in Boise is a level two, the highest that we have in the state of Idaho. Level one is, has an academic research component to it, those types of things, which won't happen anytime soon in our state. But, and, and I think Ms. Hunsaker was, was correct, you know, you can start out and have an emergency center and meet some of those, those smaller, you know, less critical, important. But, you know, less, less critical thing that require transportation to a, a trauma center. And there are different designations for traumas too. You can have certain heart stroke, those types of things. And, and, and she also talked about, and again, I think she's accurate, you could start out at this level, but you can eventually say, hey, we, we want to be a level three trauma center and be designated by that, by the state of Idaho and be able to take these certain things. And I think as our population grows and their location, that very well could be the, be the case. It's just a matter of the timing. And if you say, okay, you can only do this much at this level. And that changes. And then what's the process, process for that? So that's, that's kind of the difficulty is, is, is that, that limitation now is, is fine, but then the future, how does that move forward? I guess, and Mr. Mayor, if I can ask a question of staff and Bill or Sonia, I, I'm not sure. Cause we have this whole package here before us and involves residential of, of bearing zonings. We have, you know, the CG, of course, which is, which is the hospital and, and I think the, some other, in the medical office building. And I know the conditional use process comes into play for the CG here. And I'm trying to figure out, and one aspect of that is the standard that we have to decide for that road. Because our, our UDC says you've got to have an arterial, this is a collector. So if we decide that component now, is everything else just going to be under the CUP and go through that process? Or can we move that whole thing? We can designate CG. That means it could be anything that meets that designation, but not, not necessarily a hospital. I mean, trying to figure out if we designate CG, their site plan does include the medical campus. So that's what we're approving. If we were to approve this tonight, is that, am I on the right track with that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Hoagland, yes, if I may respond, this is Sonia Staff. Yes, if you are approving this tonight with the zoning, this is the concept plan that is presented for your approval. It would require a conditional use permit, which only goes before the Planning and Zoning Commission, not City Council. So that's why if you do approve the access, that that needs to go tonight and be included in the development agreement. Rustic Oak, just to respond to Councilwoman Perro's comment earlier, Rustic Oak needs to be a collector street consistent with the master street map. So it can't be an arterial street. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holman.
Then, so Sonia, if, if we hammer out the issue with the street, whether we approve that or not, we probably need to give guidance on some of these other things related to the emergency center usage. Because that's what the hospital will have. That's what their plan is. And that'd be part of the conditionally used permitting process, which as, as you know, doesn't, doesn't come back before council. So we need to hammer out some of those details. Is that correct?
Well, legal, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Hoagland, my stance on it would have been legal make, have another opinion, but my stance on it would be everything other than the access would need to be handled through the conditional use permit associated with it.
Mr. Mayor, Kristi Ensmann was indicating she wishes to speak for ACHD, if you want.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, maybe, maybe just a quick comment. I, I would think we could put a DA provision that they will not seek to become designated as a trauma center. I don't know what level that, if there, I'm, I don't know enough about that to know if there should be a level or just a blanket statement, but they could certainly come back before us at any time. If the community's needs are different and what's going on, on this road is different, I think they could come back to us and modify that in the future. But that's kind of what I'm leaning toward is we're making an exception for something that we normally would not. I think that there should be a compromise here and that we wouldn't want to see a trauma center. But I'd love to hear from ACHD. Sure, if others do.
Kristi, you recognized?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. There, there was just a question raised as to why this was a collector and not an arterial road man. I just wanted to briefly discuss that because it's based on the function and volume of a road. This one happens to be, your arterials happen to be McDermott and Chindon, and this functions as a mid mile collector between those arterial roadways and its function is to collect the interior traffic and funnel it to those arterial networks that are a higher volume roadway. And typically what you'll see with mid mile collectors is those typically end to be, end up being signalized for additional access. So the function eventually would be for this to go all the way down to McMillan Road. But that's, that's the function. I just wanted to throw that in there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
Thank you. I suppose this is probably a question for the applicant. So I'm sure you're all familiar with St. Luke's and Meridian, and they have a similar situation where they have this collector road that, that comes in on the north side of the main hospital. And it seems to frequently be backed up because they also, that's also an access that people use to get to medical offices, but also a lot of retail and various types of businesses that are there as they've kind of become this bypassed street. Is there any information or data or anything that you might be able to use that will help us that with hospitals that have similar situations where they're accessing off of a two lane road? And whether their ambulances have had any challenges getting, you know, I, I know that's not necessarily our purview in terms of like, it's not a job to determine whether the ambulances are going to get to your hospital on time and those kinds of things. But, but really I think we need to take very seriously what this will look like in 10 years or 20 years. And with the intention of this being a collector to go through McMillan, the anticipation is there's going to be a lot of people using this road that are not, that are not accessing hospital services. And, and, and so the same thing with, with St. Luke's, I think when that, when that street that they have that accesses the, the emergency room was first built, it didn't go all the way through and wrap around to all that retail that it, it now has access to. And it's causing problems with traffic there. Are you, just want to make sure my question is clear. Do, is there any way to get information that might help us from more empirical standpoint to help with this decision? Other than just, not that we are, aren't trusting what you're saying, we just, our job to make sure that we're having some foresight with this.
If I wouldn't mind, just, I just want to put this in people, in all of council's minds as well. Trying to figure this out. Think about St. Luke's downtown Boise, St. Owls, off of Curtis, St. Luke's, off of Eagle, all completely different. All, at least all three of those can take trauma level things coming in. Some got a collector, some have a two road arterial. Some are in a downtown space that don't have anything but a very simple road structure, and yet they all function. So I, 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 I understand council's trying to get to certain areas of comfort with something. I'm not exactly sure what. But just think about the hospitals which are in our valley and what the road network is around them and what else is around them. As you consider looking at this, I don't think you can design the perfect hospital situation. Otherwise we should take St. Luke's Meridian out from where it is because it creates all sorts of problems for everybody in the valley with its location near the, near Eagle Road. So who for that? Now, if you can, anyone who wants to take a shot at answering.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm sure Betsy can also provide some color, but I completely agree with you. You know, St. Luke's and Meridian are offices right, right by there. And I see kind of the, the way that interchange works. I don't think it's completely dysfunctional. It's just part of the, kind of the road network and kind of the environment in that area. I haven't personally experienced any congestion there that seemed like it was emergency. And that's on the busiest road in my, in my opinion, in this area, in Eagle Road. Same thing with St. Luke's downtown. I, I, I'm around there quite a bit and it is a bunch of local roads all kind of wrapped around a building and it's, and it does function, as you said. Again, this hospital, as, as Betsy said, that she only expects, you know, three to five ambulances a day. So from that standpoint, it's a very, very light load as far as from an ambulance, ambulance emergency standpoint. Their operating hours are more during the day. Betsy, I don't know if you can add some more color.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have, can you all hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, I don't have anything empirical. And I could maybe see if I could find something, but I, I, like someone said, you know, there's, every hospital is different. You know, there's no kind of mold that is consistently applied. And, but I know, you know, again, West Valley is on two, two lane roads and the hospital I was at in Denver was on, you know, a two lane road, kind of set off a main road and, you know, and that was kind of how all, so I think that there's, there is a lot of, I don't have anything empirical. I guess what I would say is I don't think that I have any concerns about committing to not pursue a trauma designation in the, you know, in the, for, for this project. And, you know, if there's a way to come back down the road when the circumstances change the road, maybe the road situation changes, come back at that point and revisit it. But so I don't, I don't have any concerns about that.
Betsy, we're missing you again. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you, how about now?
Yes.
Okay. I, I just said that I would have no issue with committing to not pursuing trauma level designation if that helps alleviate some concern.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mary.
Members of the council, kind of to piggyback the answer to Councilwoman Schrader's question, we can definitely put it through development agreement. What it asks is if Councilwoman Hoagland, I heard you say that the centers such as St. Luke's or St. Owls are currently level two. St. Owls anyways, it's level two. So would this hospital be considered a level three or some other designation? Cause we could designate in the development agreement that this is going to be designated as a level whatever. And that any future upgrade of a level would require a modification of the development agreement. And that way it's clear to upscale from what you're currently going to do. It would just require another, again, public hearing with the city council.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hoagland. If I might respond to that bill, just to, for, for information. The, the trauma designations are only issued by the time sensitive emergency system of the state of Idaho. So they're the only ones who can give that designation. So we could put a limit on that. But it does change where I was involved and now I got my knowledge base of this was the Napa, St. Alphonsus deciding, hey, we're going to go to a level, we want to be a level three trauma center. So then they went to work and they have to then present all their information in the cases at two, to this committee. And then they can be designated to that. So if Ms. Hunsaker says, well, we're not going to seek any that, you know, then, then they don't have to do that. If they're just a regular emergency care for the hospital and for whatever those other emergencies come in. And they don't have any trauma designation, then they can, they can remain that way for as, for as long as they, they want to. It, it does, where I want to make sure we don't get things into a knot here is the fact that this is going to be a burgeoning area. I mean, this is, we, you put a hospital in an area, there's no medical services. There's going to be the need as that area grows and then traffic makes it harder to get to, whether it's St. Owls over here on Garrity or, or St. Luke's on Eagle. You know, I, I don't want to make it impossible for them to not become a trauma center of whatever designation they desire or think they could meet at the time. So that, that's, that's my only concern. And if I might, now that I have the floor, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Okay. And, and, and Bill or Sonia, one, we, we talk about the DA and of course we've got the annexation request with the, the different zoning and those types of things. Is the DA part of the CUP process or are we doing a DA as well with this annexation process, correct?
Mr. Member of the council, Councilwoman Hoagland, the DA is absolutely part of the annexation process. So my only thought process is, and, and, and I was still, still suggested, because it sounds to me that to move to a level requires some, some work on the part of the hospital. So if it's in the development agreement that this is being approved as a level whatever, and they would like to go for higher than that, before they go to the work of doing it, they would come to the city council and say, would we be able to go apply for this? Depending on the circumstances, there were evidence of why that's necessary, why it's appropriate, what the conditions are. The council says, that's fine. It's not approving them for that. It's just saying you can go ask. And now you have the ability to go get it. I'm assuming there's a longer enough process that that's not going to be a great impediment to it.
And, and not to be the Debbie Downer, but I view that as like, can you please remember to take down your billboard in 10 years? I mean, they don't, unless they have to come back and do building modifications that would require approval from our community development department. Who will remember that there's a DA that they have to go ask for in order to do that? Maybe Betsy will. But I think it's just a eyes wide open. I mean, I don't disagree if that's what council wants to do, if that's where your comfort level is. But this is someone that wants to put a medical facility in our community that is in an area where there is none. I, I would hate to hamstring them too much. But if a DA is what council wants to do, there's a process to change that.
And Mr. Member of the council, the only reason we use the DA is because it's recorded. So it's always available for them. They would likely have to go to planning. I mean, again, I can't, I, I hopefully won't be here 10 years in the future where they want to do this. But they're going to likely go to planning, have a process. They always pull the DA. Are they allowed? That's going to come up.
If they have to do modifications to their building or something like that, yes.
Right.
Council, any further questions for the applicant before we move on to the public? Council only further questions for the applicant before we move on to the public. Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, none in advance, but there are several people online who may wish to testify.
Okay, well, if there's anybody in the audience. All right. Anybody in the audience that'd like to provide testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we have Val Stack.
You want to bring Val in and anybody else would like to provide testimony, you can use the raise your hand feature on Zoom or if you're in the audience, like to come forward, provide testimony. You can just come up to the podium and do so.
Mr. Mayor, Val is able to speak.
Val, you're recognized for three minutes. If you can state your name and address for the record. Mr. Clerk, do they need to be brightened as a panelist? I shall show them.
We, we've stopped doing that because of the time constraint, but she does have, she is unmuted, has the ability to talk. I don't see any movement on the microphone, so. She is raising her hand. I can try to bring her in, but that shouldn't change anything.
Val, if you're speaking, we can't hear you. Mr. Clerk, perhaps we can provide a phone number for Val to call in on.
I will get that on the screen. It did not allow her to speak either way in one moment.
Is there anybody else that'd like to provide testimony on this item? Why we try to get a phone number for Val to call in on? See nobody in the audience wishing to come forward.
Mr. Mayor, Val is unmuted again. I see her microphone's on, but we're hearing no sound. Val, if you can hear me, there's a phone number on the screen with a webinar ID. I recommend calling that number and trying to speak that way.
Okay.
Oh, there we are, Val.
Oh, you got it? Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so this is Val Stack. I'm at 6072 North Serenity Lane. And we are abutting the Hubble Homes. I just wanted to correct something that came up, a question that was asked right at the end of Patrick's presentation. And the question was whether or not there were all owner occupied homes other than the townhouse in the subdivision. And I think maybe the question was misunderstood potentially by Patrick. Because they had told us that 20% of the single family homes were designated as rentals. So they are not all owner occupied homes. So I wanted to be sure that, you know, you knew what they were saying there. Okay, on that part?
Okay, thank you.
All right. And then we hear wrecks all the time on Highway 16. And I think it's kind of silly to assume that somebody's going to go all the way downtown Meridian out to the highway, the freeway or clear downtown Boise in order to get care. If there's some sort of facility here, because they'll go to a dock in the box if they need to, if somebody's on that road. So I think that we should make that assumption that there's going to be a lot of volume of people coming in off of that road. And the final thing that I would just comment on is that although, you know, we all know that there are some real issues with access with every hospital in the valley, so let's not repeat it. We don't have to do it exactly the same way and and or let things go through that are bad just because the other hospitals are screwed up as well. Man, it's kind of a, seems like a faulty argument to me. I'd like to see what we can do to keep all the neighbors safe and the traffic reasonable. And and know, you know, this is coming with the growth, you know, for them to say that, well, there really won't be that. Only three ambulances a day. When you've got three times the volume of that over at West Valley Medical Center with the explosive growth in this area, I think that's, that's just kind of a, seems like a ridiculous low ball. So anyway, we're hoping that you guys work through this further and be able to look at the legal side of all of this and find some other access points for them to be able to do the limited version and check with ITD and ACHD. So that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Val?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
About, did you, did you mention that 20% of the homes are going to be rentals?
Yes. That's what, that's what Patrick had told us before. Patrick can answer that easily.
Okay, thank you.
It could be, it's probably in one of the earlier documents because we heard it in a couple of the meetings that they were allowing up to 20% of the single family homes to be rented, which isn't great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, anybody else raise their hand to provide testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we, sorry, Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, and see nobody else in the audience like to provide testimony. I'll ask the applicant to come back up for final comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, just to clarify, the 20% per the CCNRs, and it's pretty typical value wide on subdivisions, CCNRs cap the amount of rental units at 20%. So our business model is a for sale products, but if someone owns a home, they get a job somewhere else or, you know, maybe want to rent out their home. They're allowed to do that. The CCNRs regulate the number of units in our overall community at that 20% number. And as I said, that's pretty typical value wide in in master plans.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember President.
So that that makes sense. I get that. I just want to clarify. So what you're saying is there will not be, you know, investors coming in and buying swaths of homes and turning running, renting them out to people.
That that is not the intent. We sell all of our homes. Like I said, we have a for sale business model. We can't, if if, you know, a family comes in and buys a house and then chooses to rent it out, that's.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not talking about families and whether or not they're, they have the the autonomy to choose how they whether they choose to live in the home or they choose to rent out. That's not what I'm talking about. What I want to know, like frankly, like crystal clear is if you will have investors come in and buy multiple homes at a time and keep these homes for themselves and rent them out to other people.
Let me check with that.
Thank you.
It's, that's not something we do. It's not something that we've ever done. We've never seen it. It's, we're not going to do it. Other, I can't really tell you. It's never happened to us before. We don't intend to do it. We're, we build homes for families. It's how we've always done it. It's how we intend to do it. We don't, we don't necessarily want that to happen. So that's we can't do that. So we won't do that. I just want to clarify another comment that was made by Ms. Stack. So when Betsy was describing the operations of this hospital and compared it to West Valley, this hospital is compared to be half or less than half the size of West Valley Medical in Caldwell. And so that's how she arrived at that ambulance number. That's also how we arrived at the 300 employees for this hospital. At West Valley, they have 600. So we, that's how we, they've been modeling and doing the analysis of this new hospital based on West Valley, about half or about less than half from operation standpoint. So that's how they kind of arrived at that number. Again, Rustic Oak Way, there is going to be a light at that intersection at Chindon. So it really kind of will function like an arterial road. So it was designed that way with a suitable width. It's aligning to Rustic Oak north of Chindon as well. So we've worked with ITD and with ACHD to ensure that that's appropriate. Also, we've worked with the developer, Brighton to the northwest, to ensure that the roads are aligned correctly and that it's being built. So it functions correctly.
Thank you. Council only more questions for the applicant. Councilmember Borden.
Come back. Just get out of pretty quick.
Yes.
So in light of all the, all of the discussion, if this were to be a level two trauma hospital, how would the layout be designed differently?
I cannot answer that question. Betsy, are you still on the line? If it was a level two trauma hospital, how would the layout be different?
Um, how would the layout be different? Well, you, a level two trauma center. You know, really, the, the level, the trauma center levels really boil down more to the services versus the the layout and the design. But we're certainly not, you know, we're certainly not scoping this out to be kind of a, you have a lot of ORs and you know, a really just high level, the high level of care and acuity that goes with a level two trauma center. So, so I don't know that the layout would be different, but I, you know, I can't remember how many ORs we scoped in this. I think it was six. I think a level two trauma center would probably need more than six ORs. And, you know, other, you know, other services that, you know, at this point in time, haven't really been scoped out in kind of the project that we're contemplating here. But typically does kind of come more down to the, to the level of services versus the layout in the kind of building size.
Councilmember Borden.
The line of questioning comes, it comes from me wondering why there'd be an agreement to limit the type of services. For example, the trauma level. Councilman Hoagland brought up good, good points with regards to the demand of this area and what use likely might be and, and there's concern about intensity of use, light of that demand. And if the design, it sounds like is designed to incorporate a lower intense use. But if a more intense use doesn't alter the design in any way, why would you agree to limit yourself? I, I thought it was just the opposite that that if there was a more intense use that would be requested down the road. It would require basically a different site layout. Perhaps different access. The access issue might be more concerning. Tendency of paramedic visits, disturbances, etc. Things like that would be much more intense. You're not contemplating it now, but that's why I'm surprised.
So probably the main thing you would need for a level two trauma center is the helicopter pad. And we are not planning to, to do that in this location. Truthfully, the reason why, in my opinion, it's not, like, the, we're just getting this off the ground and getting this going. Trauma is not really part of the conversation around this location. And as it was described, it's a very complex process to become trauma designated. It takes a lot of specialties. It takes a lot of, it just takes a lot of stuff that is, is not, it's a, it's a, it's a very heavy lift. So and and the truth is by having no trauma designation, you know, that, that's, that's the most that's the simplest way to do business, at least at the outset, just because you're not having to kind of commit to all these different specialties and all these different services that, that you may not have out of the gate and for several years. So it's a, it's a very heavy lift to become a trauma center. To become a trauma level two center is an extraordinarily heavy lift. So I think that the reason why it's, it's not hard for me to say, you know, we're okay with, you know, kind of having some limitation on our, our trauma plans is because we don't really have any trauma plans. So, so I think that's, that's why, I mean, I, and like I said before, and like you all said, I don't want to limit ourselves for, you know, 20, you know, when this community, this area does, you know, if it does change and the needs change. But in, in the foreseeable future, that's just, it's just not something we're contemplating. And it is a significant, it is, it is not just, you can just become a trauma center. It's very hard. And so that's why, from an operational standpoint, it's, it's not a major ask to not do it. And and maybe we could put a limitation on it. Maybe it could be, you know, for 10 years and then we have to come back. You know, I don't know what the, if there's some way, like it sunsets in 10 years or 20 years or whatever that is, but because you're right, like it may not require some kind of permitting to go back because you may not have to change your facility level. Certainly not to go to a level three, to go to a level two, you know, maybe you'd have to add a helicopter pad or something like that. So hopefully that answers the question.
There will be robots performing the surgeries by the point in time, more than likely.
Right, they can do it from home. Yeah, they can just stay at home and the robot will come over and reach it.
Councilmember Borden.
Drone surgery.
I, I really appreciate the time that, that the applicant is investing in answering our many questions. This is very helpful information to have now and in the future. What keeps coming across my mind though is, is honestly really how many of your, how many ambulance, you know, visits to any hospital are really that truly the level that need trauma? I'm going to guess that it's not as high as we think, maybe on a daily basis. And so for me, it's not just about the intensity of the the type of care that you're giving, but it's about, in my mind, this is just about the traffic that's coming down this collector road. And whether that, you know, if, if 70, if, if 15% of your, of any ambulance services that are provided are for trauma and 85% aren't, I mean, meaning like, you know, that it's, it's not critical care, it's not ICU, then we're still talking about a traffic, a potential traffic issue on a collector road that's intended to service residential and all the way down a mile south. So that really for me is kind of where I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to rectify that.
Would you like me to respond to that?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, you, you know, you're right. And I would say probably the biggest, one of the biggest ambulance transports is sort of elderly people that are, you know, they, that's probably our number one is an elderly person that is at home and calls the ambulance. And typically those are not coming in, you know, lights and sirens and we would, we would, you know, have that agreement anyway. But those are typically not, not necessarily emergent transports. They're coming in ambulance, but they're not necessarily emergent. So, you know, so you're right, there's a fair number of those. You know, and I will just point out, so we had been working with, with BVA and Brighton on that, that property on the north side. And I believe, you know, I don't really understand all the different roads and the, and the collectors and arterials. That's not my, we can talk about trauma, but arterials and collectors are a little harder for me. But I believe that was the same collector that had access into there. So I don't know if that, something's changed since that was approved or what the difference is. But I, you know, yeah, you're right. There's, there's, there's ambulances that are not for trauma, but they are for, you know, kind of non-emergent transport. And yeah, that's, that's definitely, but that, that's in the number I gave you too for here at West Valley and kind of a comparison to what we're projecting for the volume out there.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond to her statement about right, the hospital to the north.
The, yes, go ahead, Councilmember Borden.
Um, thank you. I remember that application very clearly and we had a very similar conversation about this. And what ended up happening is that although it couldn't be designated as an arterial, it, they are designing it with the width similar to it. So they actually, it's my understanding, unless something's changed, that it's going to kind of have like a boulevard, kind of a parkway type of really a more significant entrance. And the street width is going to be wider than at least I'm understanding this application to be. The other element of that is that that street stops there. It doesn't go on into another. The other element of that is that that street stops there. It doesn't go on into another arch or road to the south. So that is that their entrance is essentially just for their project. There isn't a through street that goes and is connects another part of the city.
Betsy, just a quick question. Will you have a ambulance that runs out of this facility? Or transport?
No, no, we don't have an ambulance company that like lives at the hospital. So no, but we would.
So this facility will, will be served by the Ada County paramedics, which has one ambulance that covers a large portion. So just again, for con, you know, there's only one ambulance.
Well, we.
In this area. I'm, I'm just trying to put in perspective that you're not going to have ambulances streaming in nonstop because there's only one ambulance. It takes an hour to go between places, more than likely anyways.
Yeah. I mean, there are some private ambulance companies that will work, that will work with for, um, transport. But that again, they're not really emergency, um, they're, I mean, they're, they're, they're non-emergent transfer, transport kinds of vehicles.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you. Councilman Strayer.
Mr. Mayor. Um, I feel comfortable maybe starting a discussion and I don't know if we want to go ahead and close a public hearing. We've had this happen to us so many times where we have to open it up. So I'll just say, I think, um, to me overall, was happy with some of the changes made to the project. Was very happy that the, um, play playground amenity was added to the multifamily portion of the property. I think for me, uh, which obvious, probably is obvious from my comments, I, I think there, there's a reason that it not being a trauma center is advertised throughout the presentation to us because it's a less intense use. And I think we should try to hold them to that in the DA. For them to agree not to pursue being designated as a trauma center. Uh, I think there is a big difference if there is a future helicopter flying over this neighborhood to land, land there down the road. I think that that would, should require coming to us for modification. It's much more intense. And so that, that's where I'm at. On this one, I'm, I'm in support if we have that, um, that, um, restriction in the DA.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Just weigh in a bit, you know, we, we focused a lot on, on the, uh, medical center and, and, you know, the trauma issue. There have been good changes to the development and how it circulates and the impacts and the layout and, and some of the amenities that, that, uh, have been added, uh, since we first began with this process. Just to talk further about the, the trauma center and those types of things. One thing you have to remember, it was mentioned, you know, you have a highway, uh, highway 16 there and there's a major accident. Those, um, where they are sent to are triaged by, by trained medical professionals. And those with other paramedics, the ambulance, however, however they're triaged, they make that determine termination of where they're going to go to. So they would bypass this facility as basic emergency level services. You know, if it's a head injury, there, they'll be shipped to, uh, St. Al's in Boise. If it's a, uh, a child with major injuries, they're going to head to St. Luke. So they make those determinations. They're not going to make a stop there and then, then move on. So, uh, those things are, are done right there. The, the trauma designations are, are a significant decision for any facility, whether nonprofit, for profit. It doesn't matter to get to those designations because of the specialties that you're, that you might need, which requires medical professionals and also equipment. And so it, it, it is a major decision and those decisions are really driven by the marketplace. And if, and to me, if, if that area grows significantly and that need presents itself, I, I, and if that's the case, I doubt Serenity Lane will exist in the way it is now because of the growth that happens. And there'll be expansion in those types of things. I, 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 I tried to give you some idea of a level two trauma center. And the only best example I can give is if the president is in the area and he needs emergency services, he's going to level two. I mean, it has everything that is needed except for the teaching component. So, and that is a significant amount of money. You wonder why healthcare is so expensive when you use wood machine once a year and it costs millions of dollars. They got to pay for it somehow. So, um, it's, it's just, uh, one of those things that, uh, it, it, to me, it's, it's a market decision and it will be driven as, as that area develops and, and it's unfortunate. I completely understand how the residents of Serenity Lane feels, having gone through a change like that myself from a rural area to, uh, to a middle of a subdivision and, and those, those are difficult. But with the extension of highway 16 to the freeway and the things that are happening, this is a process. And of course we do have to make the decisions. Is this the, how it's lined out, the ins and outs of it? How the homes situated, the development, all those typical things that we do. So I, I don't have any heartburn of not putting any timeframe on, uh, having, you know, when they can go to a trauma center level or not. That will just work itself out over time through, uh, through the market. So I, I'm, I'm good with moving forward without that, that type of restriction, but it's, you know, that's what the council wants, but that's just fine.
Mr. Mayor.
First. Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, it's great having Councilmember Hogan's, you know, industry expertise here tonight. Uh, thank you, Councilmember. I've had a lot of time to kind of noodle this one and I went back and forth, kind of where Councilmember Strayer's been. And I think the, the big concern always for me is about that piece about, again, if I lived over there, I wouldn't love the idea of a helicopter flying over my house, you know, every night if there's an emergency, something like that. That part would give me some pause and some concern. I think Councilmember Hogan's spot on again, that if the hospital is going to change those types of designations for more intense use, that's going to be a much longer process. In addition, and I appreciate our, our good city attorney confirming for me, if, if they were ever going to want to put in a helipad, they'd have to come back for a CU anyways. So I, I feel I have greater comfort that if those more intense uses expand because of the marketplace, that future city councils, future residents will have the opportunity to weigh in on their thoughts about that before those changes would be made. So again, if that's the direction council wants to go, no issues for me, but I'm also supportive moving forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Members of Council, Councilmember Strayer, to add to what Councilmember Cavanagh said. So I was here when we approved the, the helicopter pad for St. Luke's. They had to build the building to have a helicopter pad to be able to do it in the future. Otherwise it's a major expense to try to retrofit a building. They had to have the CU because they also have to have an exterior pad because the FAA requires that they have two alternate sites to land. That isn't likely to change in the future. And the FAA also required that they fly over major roadways so that they don't fly over homes. So I would anticipate if you had this in the future, you're still going to, the FAA is still going to require that they fly over Chindon, over highway 16 and not necessarily over homes. But you are going to have to have a CU because having an exterior site on the property is going to require a major change to the layout of the property. So I think you'd be covered, but certainly if that's what the council's desire is, we could build that into the DA.
And to the point that was made, I don't see where you're putting a helipad on this property and you're going to have to buy out neighbors to even consider that in the future. But anyways.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Borden.
So I think what we're trying to capture is, and we're using trauma centers as one metric, but we're just trying to capture expansions of use. More intense uses. So, um, said another way, I think the DA provision that prevents uses of the property beyond which the applicant's opposing. That may manifest itself in a, a trauma designation request, but really not the trauma designation that we're concerned about. It's the helipad example or ambulance services or, or intense demand that necessitates totally different access or layout. Doesn't sound like is the case, but, um, I like that provision, even if the CUP would capture it. I like the DA to include it all, even if it's duplicate somewhat as the council. We'd have the ability or a future council have the ability to address it. The non-issue, no concern with it. The applicant, to the applicant's credit, proposed that cooperative agreement to do so and to limit itself in a circumstances change and there's a desire for more intense use. And they can apply to modify the DA, make the case, the public will hear and not a trauma designation that we're prohibiting. It would be the uses that go with that type of designation. Somehow gets captured into the DA.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I'd like to, to actually make a request of the applicant, take this in a little bit different direction. We've had many applications in the last four years, four, five years along Chindon that have really caused challenges in our community, um, among neighbors, uh, with traffic. Chindon has just, for whatever reason, it seems like every large application we get, we just grapple with it. And, um, and so I, what we've learned from some of our past large projects, uh, off of Chindon in the last few years is that when you have this multi-use development, you've got residential, you've got commercial, um, that the developer, the developers, some developers have done an amazing job of, of identifying for the public and for the, the future home buyers, homeowners, what, what is going to happen in, on that, um, property? And some developers haven't. And so I just would like to make a suggestion. Being a real estate broker and understanding this industry and also just from our experience with some of the large projects along Chindon, that the, your project be well signed, be well, um, what am I trying to say? That, 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 that the uses be identified so that as people are coming along and making the decisions about where they want to live, where they want to recreate. You know, obviously the hospital's part of phase one, so that's going to be in something that, that most individuals will know. Uh, but I just make a request. If, if, if we end up approving, if council ends up approving this this evening, as you move forward, please, provide a wonderful service to our community and make sure that what is going to transpire there is really that there's signage, that it's well known, that it's easily accessible to the public to find out what's going on and the timeframes and whatnot. Cause it just, I feel like we're kind of repeating history here a little bit with these large products, projects on Chindon. And we seem to come back to a lot of these same conversations. And, um, I, I'd love to see us make those recommendations and improve every time that we go through this process on behalf of our public.
Councilmember. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A, uh, I think we, at least for me, there's been enough discussion in regard to level of use. If, whether or not this is a trauma designation, whatever. So, but stating that, the one concern that I have after reading over my notes from our previous discussions and, you know, going over the, uh, our packet and reading and thinking, the one thing that comes to mind is our city services and what that looks like. And my, my major concern is specifically fire. And so I'll be in a great project, nice project. It's, it's a dense project. There's going to be a lot of people in this, in this subdivision, in this project. And I, I think it's well known from previous, previous discussions that we're, we're planning on two fire stations, fire station seven in the south and fire station eight in the north. And, um, I think it's pretty evident that fire station seven is going to be in the south for sure. I think that's a well-known item of discussion. What isn't quite unknown is whether or not this fire station up, up north is going to be realized in this budget, um, or in future budgets. It's a discussion that we need to have, and I don't want to get in the minutia of whether or not it's going to happen or not, but relating to this particular application, it, it, unless maybe the applicant can speak to this, but unless something comes up in discussion, I, it's difficult for me to approve this large and this dense of a subdivision, not knowing for sure what's, what fire station eight looks like. And so, those are my thoughts.
Well, I'll, I'll go ahead and give you my thoughts.
All your thoughts are.
Well, I, I think it's, it's twofold from some very practical elements. You know, I, I know this is, this is the first step. There's still other steps in the development process. And if we just want to talk the hospital, there's just the hospital element. I assume that that's a 24 month build. To complete that maybe a little less, but even if we followed our normal process with where we have the second fire station in, in 2025, a lot of this isn't going to come online before then. It, it, it may a little bit, but not much. That's if we made no changes to the CFP and just left things as, as they're currently planned for this area. I mean, you all can, the development community can tell me whether or not two to three years from now was the quickest that this would likely see any occupancy in this area. So to that point, I mean, that's from where that, you know, I will be bringing, making the request to council to do both in this upcoming year. And that will be the time for that conversation. As to the project, I love this project. I've always liked this project since I first saw it. I think it's got a great inter, integration of uses and how it flows, the open space, the elements, the, the density, the interaction with the adjacent neighborhoods, the connection that comes all the way through to create that connectivity. Um, I think it's got a lot of pluses. I, I think that the commercial with the hospital is a great asset for this part of, of, of the city. I, I view this very similar to what Salzner just put in, um, up by 10 mile, you know, same. Maybe a little bit more than that, but probably not that much different from all aspects. Again, just looking at the roadway, how, you know, not on 10 mile, you actually got to go pretty far back in that, you know, they, they can take ambulances there too. Not residential right next to it, but the level of road, the type of road, what it is, all very similar from that standpoint. And I, I, and I don't want my comments to be mistaken from earlier. Uh, yeah, we don't want to create a problem. My point was that every hospital in our area has different circumstances, which make it unique and how it's accessed, the roads that are around it, congestion from other things, not from their doing. You know, some of it is, but you know, I don't know that you go downtown and you go like, oh, St. Luke's. Man, I can't believe they're letting those ambulances run through. You know, you never hear about that, but 10 mile, or I'm sorry, Eagle Road, we hear about it. Cause it creates traffic issues in that area because it's so, so much congestion. So there are lessons learned that if we can't take from other places. But from, from my perspective, I feel like we will be able to provide the services to this area based upon our projections that we've seen, our ability to build stations and have them in place, whether it's 2023 or 2025. And if that's what council is concerned about is the, the date, my, I would encourage you to take that up with the, with those, the applicant. If you feel like there's a need that you want to put a limitation on when this could be developed, but I'm, it's my intention to, and our fire chief's intention to bring forward to you a plan to develop this, to provide a service in this area by October of 2023. Whether you agree with that, that remains to be seen.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
I know in the staff report, it talked about that the subdivisions propose to develop in nine phases or a period of four to five years. I'd like to hear from the applicant to kind of, if we can get a little better timeframe of how this master plan will, will play out, among other things.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilmember Hogan. Um, yeah. So we typically, the way that most developers work is we try to pave once in the summertime and then once, uh, in late fall, uh, just given the, the issues of, of winter time, you can't pave during that time. So, and we took, took a look between 40 and 60 lot phases. And so, um, with a nine or 10, uh, phased phased projects, we're looking at about a five-year build out. We are, as soon as we can, we want to start our our engineering plans, hoping to have those go through, and we anticipate to start construction potentially as early as the end of this year or early next year in hopes to bring lots on in 20, summer 2022. You know, potentially maybe our first homeowners move in beginning of 2023. So that's kind of the standpoint. So if we're able to deliver our first homes in 2023, you can move out maybe five and a half years from that, when the final homes will be built in, you know, assuming that this market continues as as we've seen it. So that's, that's kind of what we're looking for and is is our timing there. The question about the the fire serviceability for this particular project, I believe it was at our February hearing, Chief Bergerino had a really great, I don't know if he's on the line or not, but he had a a map that showed the current service area for this particular area. And the line went down the current extent of Levi Lane, and then it went all the way down Serenity Lane. He showed that that line was constricted because there's no other roads that exist in that current area. But as soon as Levi Lane or Rustico Lane goes in in the first phase, which we are committing to building that in the first phase, particularly for this reason, for fire access and safety, the whole, almost the whole project is within the current service area with the current facilities that you all have. Another part of that commitment to the fire chief and to the city of building that first Rustico all the way through the project is it helps with fire connection to our neighbors, to our south of Oaks North. And while they are a different builder from us, we think that is a net positive for the community overall. Those new homeowners in phase eight, I believe of Oaks North, will have quicker access, emergency access because of the that we're going to be putting in in our first phase. And so that's something that I advocated for, that we advocated for with the city and in hopes that it would help our project be more attractive from a, from the question of fire emergency response. Lastly, the hospital, and we've had conversations with the fire chief about this, and he said essentially hospitals could stand on their own merit for fire response. All the buildings are fully sprinklered. They're emergency ready. If there's an issue with with fire or anything like that, it's on a major intersection. So from a fire standpoint, hospitals really can kind of run their own show. Obviously, all of our homes, you know, would need that fire services. In our multifamily complexes, we require those to be sprinklered. Again, those are the closest units that we have to Chinon, so they are sprinklered and they have the quickest access for fire services. But I just want to end with that, that we spend a lot of time and we're spending a considerable amount of of investment in putting in that full road to make that full connection from our neighbors to the south, all the way to the north, extending the services from our neighbors from the south, which have an agreement on that we're going to extend those services to our property line all the way through our property to the hospital in that first phase. So it's a, it's a big investment, it's a big expense. We think it's the right thing to do to help support development along Chinon in the future. I hope that kind of eliminates any questions or anything you had. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I'm going to take a crack at it. Maybe we close the public hearing.
Second. Motion second to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll be everything bad by saying I. Pose name. The eyes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I will take a crack at a motion and maybe we'll see where we shake out and if there's discussion. Just trying to keep track of who I thought was on each side, and maybe there's enough of a consensus. So I'll give it a try. After considering staff, applicant and public testimony, I move to approve file number H 2020 dash 0047 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of May 18th, 2021, with the addition memorialized at the DA agreement that city council believes the North Rustic Oak Way Emergency Care Access is sufficient for a less intense hospital use and that the DA should include an agreement for the applicant and the hospital to agree not to pursue being designated as a trauma center.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, may I clarify the motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second it so before we can get there.
We we have a second, but yes, Sonya, if you'd like to ask a clarifying question.
Does this, does the motion mean that you're approving an emergency room? Trauma center is not language that's used in our code. It's the emergency room is the key word. So please include whichever way you you're proposing in your motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll amend my motion to clarify that we'll approve the emergency room use. But there would be a modification or an addition to the DA that the applicant would agree not to pursue becoming designated as a trauma center. Because that is within their control. Whether or not they pursue that business plan.
Does the second agree?
Yes.
Second agrees. Is there discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, just a question for Councilwoman Schrader. Is there a timeframe on that or is that just flat or the request, if they ever do want to pursue that, the request would come back to to council? Was that?
Yeah, my understanding, Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I should have gone through you. My understanding is that they they would need to come before council to modify the development agreement in the future. And I don't foresee a certain date we could choose. I just think that's a more intense use, and at that time, they'll come before us and or a future council, and the needs of the community would be considered at that time.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Members of council, maybe Sonya could answer this question. What would trigger planners to review a change in the use? Because we wouldn't use, again, if we don't have trauma center in our code, that's not going to trigger anything. I know more intense use would be what we normally would, but what specific language, Sonya, if any, do you think would trigger what the council's requesting, essentially a planning review that this is going to need to go back for a modification of the development agreement?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Nary, that that was kind of the basis of my concern is that we we don't have trauma center outlined in our specific use standards. You could certainly add it as a DA provision, you can add anything. We would always be looking at the development agreement, though, when we approve any land use applications out there. So we could just simply carry over that restriction into the certificate of zoning compliance approval and the conditional use permit approval that they not pursue being designated as a trauma center.
And then I think we would be okay if we put those orders in there. I just wanted to make sure it would trigger someone to make that review.
And unfortunately, I believe there will be nothing that would trigger it unless they put in a helicopter pad or expand their building. Because they don't have to ask the city to become a trauma center is part of the process.
But but if they did any change within the building itself, like even just a tenant improvement, they would have to go back.
Mr. Nary, if tenant improvement, he, we're getting on a little slippery slope here. We may or may not be able to catch it in something in a situation like that. So typically, we don't look at tenant improvements.
They're going to be really good neighbors. They're going to be good neighbors and know that they got to come back because that's what we're going to rely upon.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Yeah, that's, that's what makes it difficult. Like, you know, Ms. Hunsaker, if she's still there, you know, she may recall, you know, and make that happen. But, you know, as often the case with CEOs at hospitals, they they may move on. And I was trying to to fit, this is just one designation, one issue, and when I was listening to Councilman Borton, he was talking about anything that was related to more intensive use. And that has a lot of meaning in a hospital setting. So, you know, and a trauma designation is one of them. I mean, are they, if they add specialties, if 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 there's going to be more types of areas that are going to be utilized, I don't know. I mean, it's just, do we have that covered with just the trauma designations? Is that our biggest concern? And it might be. And that if they add more doctors and maybe they want to have a pediatric specialty and add add a children's wing or something that falls under the expansion in a whole different area, but and it would come back to to council, I would assume, because if they're going to, especially if they seek a building permit, of course, but you know, just, does this, are we, are we covering the bases that that you expressed earlier that needed to be covered?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I tried to limit the provision in the DA agreement not to be more expansive, because I believe that would further limit their business plans and attempted to tie it to something somewhat objective. That doesn't involve us opining on their specialties or whether the use is more intense or not. And this seems like it fit, was a good compromise and fit with their business plan. So that's why I tried to make the motion that way.
Council, further discussion?
Councilman Borton.
Tricky to define the metrics, but it's something. Again, the applicant proposed it and offered it, and the Councilwoman Schrader's concern is spot on. Writes some sideboards. One of the things that that played in the game I found compelling was the remarks from the mayor and from the applicant that that Station Eight is not critical for this project to be successful, that there's service levels available for it. That in my mind, it's no secret, I think Station Seven in the south, we should amend the budget and do it tomorrow. But Station Eight, to me, is a distant second part. Which is no surprise. So the fact that that your remarks, Mayor, and the applicant's remarks, that Station Eight's not a critical component, that could come later, if it's 2025. We'll see. I think that was an important, that's an important part for me, to get some comfort that this project is successful and safe.
Not to, just so we're clear, I'm, I think that's just from a timing standpoint, how long it will take to build, but there could be a time where even I'm going to leave it to the fire department to determine whether or not they think there's adequate coverage or time. I think it's another station up here makes a lot of sense for a lot of different reasons altogether, but the timing is the issue. We know it's not going to show up tomorrow. We've got a couple of years before there'll be a nexus, just like in the south. We got homes right now, been there a couple of years. By the time we get service to you know, it doesn't always come at the 100% perfect time. First off. Council, further deliberations on the motion? All right, question's been called. Call the rule.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton. Kavanagh. Perrow.
I.
Schrader.
I.
Hogan.
I.
Burnt.
All eyes, motion carries. The item is passed. Council will go and take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 8 o'clock.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, we will go ahead and come out of recess and move on to our second public hearing tonight, which is continuing from April 13, 2021, for Shaffer View Terrace, H 2020 dash 0117. Now, as long as make any opening comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This application was heard by city council previously on March 9, and it was continued to the April 13 hearing in order to get more information from the Idaho Transportation Department in regard to future plans pertaining to widening of Meridian Road and when the turn lane would be constructed if funds were allocated for the improvement. The letter was submitted from ITD. You should have it in your packets tonight. It's also included in the public record. The project was continued again to tonight's meeting because of the legislation that was in process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant with us? Would they like to make any comments?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I did include the presentation that you saw previously, and I'd be glad to run through that if you would like to see it again.
Counsel, would you like to say anything else from any refresher from the presentation? Looks like that's a no, so I think we're good.
Okay, very good. I will stand for questions.
Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Councilman Burnt.
Mr. Brecken, let me read my notes here. Did you hear from ITD about, we're getting feedback with regard to the visibility issues at the entrance of your project?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burnt. We did not get any specifics from ITD regarding the visibility or what they would like to see there. I did bring some additional visuals. If if I could, I can, I can share my screen and show some of that information.
Mr. Mayor, this is Sonya. Just while we're waiting here, I did fail to mention a reminder to city council that they should act on the applicant's request for a waiver to allow Block Three to exceed 1,200 feet due to the reasons noted in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonya.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burnt. You can see the photo here. This is at the intersection of Meridian Road and Shaffer View Drive, facing south towards Kina. Existing condition shows existing landscape, large trees, and the grade change as it slopes up from Meridian Road into the subdivision. Here is a photo looking the other direction, and you can see some of the large trees here. Here is another photo looking out of Shaffer View Drive towards Meridian Road. And what this photo shows highlighted here with the red and the green, the red area are the, is the existing landscape that we plan to remove, as is depicted on the proposed landscape improvements to help increase the visibility. And the green is, shows essentially a location of where the new landscaping will be installed. This is the other side of the street. Again, similar removal of existing landscape and walls. And if you recall, when we were talking about this previously, the plan is to remove this landscaping as well as regrade this slope so that it cuts it back and minimizes the protrusion and any visible barrier at that location. And this is just a planned view, kind of cleaned up. Shows Shaffer View Drive, Meridian Road, and you can see here where the, this is the new proposed sidewalk, actually 10-foot pathway, and landscape burn, as is shown on the landscape plan. And so essentially, this area here, as well as over here, would be cleared out and provide better visibility further back into the site as you drive out of Shaffer View Drive and look to make a turning movement either way out to traffic. ITD did not give us any specifics here. This was purely our effort to improve the situation and and make it safe.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
Thank you, John. One, one question before I forget is, has, did ITD talk to you about whether that is just, is that going to be a ride-in, ride-out only in that entrance or any other details?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burnt. We did have, after, after our last meeting and council's request for us to work with ITD, we had a conference call with ITD, Erica Bowen there, in an effort to find or obtain some specific direction and answers to questions. And it was a rather unfruitful conversation. They, they said, they, I guess, ITD, if you see the letter, I think it's, it explains it there more specifically, but ITD requested that this area be a condition of approval by the council and that they would like the developer to participate by donating money for the future improvements. In short, they're, they are working on the designs and they don't have a clear path as to what they want to do in the future, is what I got out of it.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
So, so ITD, just to clarify, didn't give you a path forward or a recommendation in regard to what that entrance looks like, specifically if it's, in the meantime, I guess, until they get a right lane configured, you know, into this subdivision? In the meantime, wondering to know if it's going to be right in or right out only.
But, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burnt, no, they did, they did not. This is only involving the three lots. I might, I might add that, you know, this access is, is existing. It's full access right now for the existing homes. And what we're proposing, go back to the overall plan, it's really, you know, the addition of these three lots here. Previously, we had four lots, and we removed one lot in an effort to blend in better, as, as was requested by council. And so, you know, the, the existing entrance and drive and functionality of this would remain as is, other than what we are proposing for improvements.
Counsel, only for the questions.
Mr. Mayor.
One second, Joe.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
John, I think we clarified this at the, one of our other meetings, but those lots, lots two and three, I think they were at the top of the hill, and there was some concern about vehicles coming out of driveways onto that road and visibility. And I think we established that those would be forward-facing. Cars would be pulling out, not backing out from, in that area and should be able to, to see decently for direction.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland. Yes, these, these are substantially sized lots. And what we did discuss previously was that, that expectation here is that these are going to be large estate homes, very similar to what is existing adjacent here. And if you look at the area, we can see that the majority of these have a very large turnaround driveway, and all of them have substantial drives with adequate turnaround onsite. And that is the plan for these three lots as well.
Counsel, any further questions for the applicant? Okay, Deputy Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, I had a quick question. It just popped in my mind about this project. Is there fire hydrants on Shaffer View? I haven't been out there in a while.
Mr. Redgurnell, I do not believe there are. These, these are within the county and have onsite septic and water wells. And so I do not believe that they have fire hydrants right now.
Okay, I was just, I had one of those, oh, moments, because we do have a drafting site out there that I just reminded myself of. And so I just need to make sure that we talk about that drafting site at some point. There's a large tank in the ground at your first lot there on the right.
Ah, yes.
So that's our water supply for that subdivision, so we need to make sure we talk.
Okay, very good.
Counsel, anything else for the applicant right now? I don't know, Mr. Clerk, could we, anyone sign up to write testimony in this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, we do have some people who are watching. If you would like to provide testimony on this item, if you can use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of Zoom, and we can unmute you to provide comments. Looks like we have no one that like to provide testimony, so will the applicant like to make any final comments?
Mr. Mayor, membership of council, I just, maybe just like to reiterate. I think this is great infill type of subdivision that we're proposing here. It provides a very nice transition between the large estate homes and the smaller lots to the north. You know, even though we're asking for some exceptions here, I, I don't think they're unreasonable in any way. And this will be a nice addition to the community, particularly with all the amenities that we're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Borden.
Question for staff, I might have missed it, but the, the report that speaks to the northbound right turn lane and the cost share, needing to clarify and insert into the DA what the solution of that is, is, is the contribution of the proportionate share within the DA, the DAS recommended solution for that.
If I could just, we, we don't have any proportionate share agreements with ITD. So I don't know what you would be, what would be requiring the developer to enter into an agreement with from that standpoint. from that standpoint.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Not sure if it's economically viable. But there was a comment under outstanding issues that ITD recommends the city require the developer to actually go ahead and install the northbound right turn lane. Not sure what the cost of that would be and what that would look like, but that was their recommendation.
Speaking of other areas in the city where we've had very similar issues come up, really the only way you're going to get an improvement is through conditions at the annexation on the developers. We have a very, we have an issue up in Black Cat where there's no right-hand turn lane and absent development putting that in, it was likely, it's not a priority. And even if we did a proportionate share agreement with ITD, you know, where would this right-hand turn lane rise to the level of needed improvements on this road? Those are the types of things where it may or may not ever be used for this purpose. Because you can't, you're not going to collect the monies to do this project. It's so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I'd love it if the applicant would react to the suggestion from ITD that we go ahead and require the developer to build the right turn lane. If you have explored that and if that's something you're prepared to do.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader, I believe the ITD had recommended either, either or, either or, the right turn lane or the cost share. And we think we would much prefer to do the cost share since ITD is working on a plan and will be, you know, we're working on the design and that will be coming forward soon. And then they'll be improving the whole most likely the whole street, the whole highway there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, I think the, the challenge that the mayor just outlined for us is that we don't, we don't have a mechanism in place to do that. And so if we don't require this improvement now, there's a very real possibility that it wouldn't happen in the future. I guess I'm just thinking through that personally as I'm making the decision.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader. I guess yeah, if you could maybe I guess we're wondering what the cost differential would be there if that would truly be a benefit. And maybe we could follow up with ITD to verify that that would be beneficial versus, versus the cost share. Not quite clear how to proceed here.
Yeah, it's about as clear as mud, unfortunately with ITD. So we feel for you. Mr. Mayor, question for staff.
Councilman Schrader.
Do we have any example of a right turn lane and have we required that before in previous developments? And do we have any idea what maybe just in our, not that this would cost a certain amount, but from our past experience, like what, what that cost could be or an example?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, actually, I was just reading the letter from ITD that was submitted that you guys should have dated March 30th, the email. And it says attached is the draft transportation mitigation agreement. Please reach out to me with any questions. I put in there that the monetary contribution of $59,358 prior to the Meridian City Clerk signing the first final plat. I think that that's what that was for. To answer your question, I'm not aware of any other situation. Doesn't mean there hasn't been. I'm just not aware of it.
I mean, are you asking if there's been areas on state facilities where right-hand turn lanes have been required and paid for by development? Absolutely.
Okay. Just wondering.
To what level? The village?
Yeah, okay.
That was the star agreement, but they were still required to put in right-hand turn lanes. You know, so how you pay for them is one thing, whether they're required or not is the other. Councilman Burton.
So, and you can, so if, if you go down that path, walk us through what happens? If, for example, that agreement's done and there's a developer pays a proportional share, what happens culminating in it ultimately getting built?
Yeah, I, I can't answer that. Councilman Burton, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not sure.
This is, this is a, this is part of the challenges with this. Because really, there's no guarantee that this would ever be built under a proportionate share agreement.
Yeah, so.
They would come to us and say, where do you want to see these funds expended that you collect? And they, for example, they wanted developers on Locust Grove to contribute to improvements on Meridian Road. ITD really is trying to create an impact fee when they don't have the ability to create impact fees and they're reliant upon cities to, I'm going to use the word again, extract contributions from developers to pay for their facilities that they don't have a mechanism to really adequately improve. So it's quite frankly, I don't consider these reimbursement agreements to be frankly legal in terms of if you really think about it, the fact that a developer can pay for something that they may not get what they're actually paying for. They're contributing to system-wide improvements in places, but the only way you can ever guarantee you're going to get a right-hand turn lane here is if the developer puts it even if ITD does the road, they may or may not choose to put it in. If they don't want to.
Matt, or excuse me, Mr. Mayor, if I could just add to that, that's absolutely correct. In their letter that they submitted to the city, again, you have in your packets in front of you, you should have dated April 7th. ITD is saying they're not sure when the turn lane will be constructed if funds are allocated for the improvement. Their goal is to collect proportionate share contributions from all developments along State Highway 69 corridor. Collected funds will be prioritized to be applied to projects on State Highway 69 in alignment with the corridor plan. ITD must expend the funds within 10 years. And they currently don't have a program project to widen this area. Bill Parsons did message me a bit ago and said that Victory Commons was another example on Victory and Meridian Road.
Mr. Mayor, we have examples of where we haven't done it. Currently, it's a big problem. And so in my opinion, I get that, you know, and I feel for those who come before us. I know that they don't have the intent of not providing sufficient level of public safety for those with whom you know, would be going in and out of their subdivisions, whether visitors or homeowners. I know that that's not the intent at all, but I think that we have one shot to get this right. And Meridian Road is a really busy road. People are flying down. I believe that I believe it's 50 or 55 miles per hour. And it's extremely important that we have a right turn lane. We don't wait up to 10 years to have this done. So I'm only in support of this unless if the developer is willing to build it. If they're not, I'm not supportive of it because of public safety concerns.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I could like to screen share here one more time. There's I guess I'd like to cut a couple of things. So this is a plan that we were able to obtain off the ITD website. Now, that's not an official plan. But it does depict, you can see, this is Meridian Road. This is Schaefer View Drive. And so the three lots will be going in here. And also, this, this is a little bit dated aerial photo. We have the prevail subdivision that's being built in this area right now. And I guess what I'll say is, you know, it's not that we're completely against building this right-hand turn lane. I guess what we're a little bit, the reason we're hesitant here is that, you know, we're asked by ITD to spend this, contribute to their fund. And, you know, the, you know, bigger question too is if we agree to right-hand turn lane, what are the parameters of that? Where does it go exactly? How far does it need to go? It just needs to be better defined. As we see it, this right-hand turn lane actually is a bigger picture that should be shared in by the adjacent developers, particularly Preval as well as Brighton. Since this road is, is on the half mile. And if ITD already has some plans here that they're working on to completely revamp and, and rework Meridian Road. It's just, it, it seems like a waste for us to go through this effort to put in a right-hand turn lane. That's just going to get torn out in a few years. And if, you know, that would be something we would have to work directly with ITD with to determine what that right-hand turn lane is. Is it? You know, is it, what distance does it go? Does it go on past? I mean, that just seems like a substantial burden for just one developer to, to bear when there's quite a bit more going on in this area. And so like I said, it's not that we're, we're against building a right-hand turn lane, but more we don't want to be building, you know, a mile of right-hand turn lane. That's when some other folks should be sharing in that, I guess.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
No, John, I don't, I don't disagree with, with your, with what you're saying. And I believe that your thoughts and your, and your concerns are valid. I'm not trying to invalidate anything that you just said. Do you want to, you want us to continue this? And so you can get some answers from your neighboring partners and ITD?
Well.
Because I think that your questions you're answering are very important and valid and questions that cannot be answered this evening because we're not ITD and, and we're not Brighton and we're not, you know, we don't own land next to what you're talking about. So you need, you need time to go take care of these issues before we make a decision.
Councilman Burton, if I could just follow up, sometimes the first one in does bear the disproportionate share of costs. And just like the last one in can sometimes not have to bear any of the costs. But as council member and since working with your neighbors to create a plan together where those costs can be shared, if that's the appropriate solution, then it may take time as compared to moving this project forward now, or even I don't have any idea what Brighton's plans are for this area or timing. Is this?
And Mr. Mayor, that's not, it's not our purview.
Correct. That's right.
It's, it's not something that we get involved with. We just want to get it right. However, this works out is go make it happen. You know, that's, I guess that's all I can say because it needs to happen. What it looks like is up to you and not your neighbor developers and ITD. And those questions need to be set in stone before I can make it, before I can make it. I, I want a six, but I, I need those answers before I can vote on this. Or the answer is going to be no for me.
So if you're, if you're telling us and I want to hear it clearly. But Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burton, we will agree to build the right-hand turn lane. However, I would like to reiterate that we have on several occasions had multiple conversations with ITD in an effort to find out what they would like us to do for road frontage improvements. And every time we've gotten the same answer, which is really no answer at all. That they don't know what they would like built and that they, they really don't want us to do anything there right now. So I would guess concede that we will build the right-hand turn lane at ITD's direction.
Councilman Schrader.
You know, maybe part of ITD's thought process was laying out the, the two paths. The proportional share path, which doesn't work. And this other path, and if city council's direction is for you to build a right-hand turn lane, you know, I would think that they would like to take advantage of that resource and work with you to do something that'll work longer term. Certainly, I would think personally speaking for future developments along this corridor, if the same dilemma existed for me, I would be hung up about that too. So you could tell your, you know, neighboring developers that this will be an issue for them possibly in the future. Maybe you can work something out. But it's, it's tough. I mean, I, I feel for you, but I'm in the same camp as Councilman Burton right now. And we've got this situation off Black Cat. I've had a lot of complaints about it. I, I don't live far from it and we can't undo that now. Undoing that, unfortunately, we can't rewind the tape and and so, you know, fixing these problems later is like almost impossible. And that's why we're in this tough spot.
Now they're concerned. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader. I guess one, one, maybe some points of clarification. Do, do you want us to build a right turn lane out of Schaefer Views for the three lots that we're adding? Or should it be further up here where the, our main entry into the subdivision will be? Would be happy to do that.
Councilman Holden.
Mr. Mayor. And that's the situation I, I can't figure out is what are they asking when they say a right-hand turn lane? Right-hand in at Schaefer Butte or the new intersection? And a acceleration right-hand, right turn acceleration lane from Schaefer and the other local road that will be coming out, new road? I mean, that can be very extensive, but we just don't have any direction from what ITD gives us here. And, and that's, and they have to expend the funds within 10 years. So you think there'd be some sort of preliminary plan out there? And, you know, I, I feel for the developer on this. It's just, it's, it's very frustrating trying to figure out what to do, who's all going to be participating. And, and the fact that we just don't have any idea. And then the developer doesn't have an idea, how much is that going to cost? And what does ITD really want to have? You know, it, it's, I don't know, just, it's frustrating.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
Completely agree with what Councilman Hogan just said. Is there any way that we can help the developer in his, in their communication with ITD to expedite this process?
Yes, I think we can from a, from a practical standpoint. Because these are all the similar questions that we've had. And because these are all the similar questions that we've had with on black cat from that standpoint. I, I, you know, my, the short answer is. You know, to me, ITD's. Direction, but unfortunately IT's direction has not been great even in black cat. So that's why I don't want to just leave it to them. I think we should all have a comfort level about what the expectations are. In this.
Mr. Mayor. You're exactly right. Comfort level. We're talking about a comfort level that I think that we're all looking for. I think it's. I think that that's where all, I think we're all in agreement that we don't have that comfort level right now. And because we don't have that comfort level, it's very difficult for us to make a decision tonight. Maybe we can, you know, I feel for this, for John and his team, and I get what he's saying and I get what, what he's asking. It's just. Everyone's scratching their heads and, and when you're talking about a corridor like Meridian, what like this highway? Gosh, this is just the wrong place and the wrong time. He's scratching her heads and making decisions. That's just, I mean, that's all I'm saying.
Oh, Mr. Brecken. I don't know that we have any of our transportation people on here, but perhaps if we could continue this to the, we have a special meeting in. Two weeks. On the 26th, we can see if what our, our staff can do to work with you and ITD to get some clarification. On this. And if, if you want to reach out to other neighborhooding developers and find out what their plans are. Because they probably will care as well. I would leave that up to you, but. If that would work, we could at least see what we can accomplish in two weeks. Eight days. It seems like it's a little. Okay, sorry. Maybe that's a little quick. Maybe the first, first meeting in June.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I guess if we have to, we have to, however, I, you know, I think something to bear in mind here is our. Proportion of this contribution is 1% of these road improvements. I feel that, you know, putting the brad of this burden on this one developer is. A bit so lopsided, you know, these improvements encompass this corridor. And, you know, while we are glad to participate and do our part. And work with adjacent developers and so forth. And that is just a lot of work to try to. Well, one to coordinate with. All these adjacent developments that are going in. I know there's for a fact, there's things in the works. I'm sure the city knows better than I do. What the details of these other developments. And. I guess it is what it is, but I hope the council will take that into consideration.
Mr. Brecken, just to speak from conversations that we've, that I've had personally with ITD on other areas. A right hand turn lane to them can be throwing down some blacktop pavement on some already compacted dirt. So quite frankly, to get a right hand turn lane could cost you a fraction. Of what a proportional share agreement could be if it meets. If there's, if there's property there, if it's, so it's, if there's additional, if there's currently any sort of shoulder. That's what I'm saying. So it could mean a lot of different things from this, from the standpoint. That's why at least find out what the immediate. Is versus the long term. And you're right. 1% for a lot more than just a right, but a right hand turn lanes. Based upon what I've heard from ITD, about $50,000 is about appropriate for a right hand turn lane based upon black cat because really the costs are in the signals and other things. So I think there's some good conversations to have that are not that far different. Personally, but. Depends upon what ultimately is needed. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember.
Mr. Brecken, what date do you want this continued to?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, just the next available option would be fantastic. I know staff has the dates available.
Mr. Mayor, June 1st would be the first available. Because today would be the deadline or tomorrow morning would be the deadline for the 25th hearing. To get this information turned around.
Sonya, whatever data is selected, I am assuming you can get with Miranda tomorrow.
Yes.
So, Mr. Mayor, the quickest date. If they're asking for the quickest date, the quickest date would be the 26th. If they can think, if they think they can hammer this out. In two days, so that's on the agenda for the 26th. I have no problem doing that, but. I mean, it's, I don't, I'm a developer and so I have no idea what that process looks like.
We have no idea what ITD's availability is to even engage in conversation.
So if.
Councilmember. Councilmember.
If Mr. Breck, sorry, sorry. If Mr. Brecken saying as soon as possible. Well, then we can put it on the 26th. If, if. The applicant is unable to get the information they need. They can have the top score for most continuances in 2021 and we can continue it again.
Mr. Mayor, I believe the meeting date is May 25th, which is Tuesday.
There's a special one on the, when's the next day?
Thank you. Sorry. I didn't know that. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to request the June 1st. For hearing for the continuance, please.
Council, you've heard the request. Do I have a motion, Councilman Cavan?
Move, we continue item two, public hearing for H 2020 dash 0117 to June 1st.
I have a motion of second to continue this public hearing until June 1st. Is there any discussion? If not, all favor six by by Sanai. Opposed name. The eyes have it and the item is continued. Thank you. Next item up is a public hearing for Robert's annexation H 2021 dash 0013. And we'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
We're getting the presentation loaded up here, sir. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This is a proposal for an annexation of 1.7 acres of land with an R2 zone district. Site, like I said, about 1.7 acres of land is zoned R1. It's located 1630 East Paradise Lane. That is the southeast quadrant of McMillan and Locust Grove, very rural area of the county. The property is comprised of two lots that are presently zoned R1 and unincorporated Ada County. The southern lot, so again, two lots, the southern lot until just recently had a 4,000 square foot residence on it. The applicant demolished a single family residence in anticipation of building a newer 6,000 square foot house. With a detached shop and garage. The applicant contacted Ada County to merge the lots together and to construct the larger home. And they were told that because the property directly abutted the city limits, it would need to be annexed. Here is a picture on the right there. You can sort of give you an idea of where the project site is. And on the left. This is a site plan showing the proposed house that's going to be constructed. The nearest available sewer is located in North Locust Grove, which is about 1,400 feet north of the subject property. The applicants received a city engineer and public works approval for our utilities waivers. So. Under our code, you would actually have to connect into the sewer. But because the sewer is 1,400 feet from the property, doesn't make a lot of sense for one single family residence. City understands that. We're okay with the waiver. There would be a requirement in the conditional, or sorry, there'd be a requirement in the development agreement. That when services become available, the applicant would have to tie into the sewer. So again, we're okay with that. There's a second waiver that the applicant was required, was requiring. Presently, there is water that's available at the intersection of Locust Grove and East Paradise Lane. Per our code, the applicant's required to extend a water main from that intersection east to the adjacent properties. The applicant is asked for a waiver from that. The city engineer actually denied that particular waiver. The applicant is now appealing that waiver to the council. The applicant believes that that is somewhat costly to have to extend that water main. City engineer's opinion is that they should. What the applicant wants to do instead is to be able to just have a service line tied directly in shortest distance and save them money. There's existing sidewalk on the east side of North Locust Grove, but otherwise the heritage subdivision, which is where this property is located, the entire area is very rural. It, it, there is no sidewalk that staff has been able to find in the subdivision. However, the UDC does require sidewalks along both sides of the street. Staff has gone out there and taken a look at the property. We don't have strong opinions about it. Again, we would leave that to the council to decide whether they would want only this particular property for a single family residence. To have to build the sidewalk. This one in front of the planning commission, and I'll talk about that in just a second. So on April 15th, this went to the planning commission. There were four citizens that were there. The primary concerns of the citizens. Were why was this being annexed? Was R2 a zone district that would allow more than one particular house? I think. There's just a lot of concern because it's a very rural neighborhood. They like being in the county. They don't want development basically creeping into their neighborhood. If, if water or sewer mains are connected and extended into their neighborhood. It could facilitate additional property owners selling their properties and developing. So that's really their concern. The applicant agrees with them. Unfortunately, in regard to the applicant, they're in a rock and a hard place that they can't get a building permit. The county sent them to us and really their only option now to be able to annex is to get the water and sewer. The planning commission did recommend approval. The planning commission also did agree that the applicant should not have to extend that water main. From Locust Grove up Paradise. The planning commission did not believe that they should have to build the sidewalk. And the planning commission agreed with staff that they should not have to connect into the sewer. Until at such time that there's a closer connection. Again, I want to mention, because I know there's at least several neighbors that have, that are probably listening in. That the development agreement will say only one house can get built on this property. That's, that's the point of this. One single family 6,000 square foot house. If the applicant ever wants to build anything else other than one house. Or subdivide any of the additional lots, not only would they have to come in front of you to amend the development agreement, but there would be a public hearing. There would probably be a plat. So all of the public would be notified. And once again, they would have any chance to be able to weigh in on this. With that, the staff recommends approval. Staff's only comment would be if the, if this council. Is supportive of this and they're supportive, that they should not have to extend the water main or build the sidewalk. Those were two conditions that, that the council should include into their, into their approvals. And with that, I'll accept any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Under the current. I know he wants to take the two lots, make them into one. But under their, the designation we would have for zoning for those parcels. They could request what up to three. Units per property, so a total of six if they had wanted to do that instead of just the one.
That is correct, sir. R2 is our lowest zone district. We don't have a lower density zone district with that. But again, the development agreement will control that. So the development agreement will say one lot, one house.
So, Mr. Mayor just fought, so he's going in a direction that should be in the neighbor's favor as opposed to going the other direction that would increase housing there.
I guess that depends on your perspective, sir. The concerns of the neighbors are incorporating into the city and extending any kind of water sewer is going to. Make it easier to develop in the future.
Alan, to that point. Do, do we know, is, when, where is this section of roadway? In an ACHD five year work plan or not?
I know that there are going to be some widening done to Locust Grove. Which would include sidewalk. Off the top of my head, I can't remember how many lanes. There is not any proposed improvements that I know that are going to be the paradise. But yes, the ACHD is eventually going to expand. Locust Grove in the near future.
Right. And that what I'm trying to figure out, what is the near future? Any ideas in the five year work plan? Is it not in the five year?
I believe it's in the five year work plan, correct.
Oh, can you pull back up the map that shows?
That one?
Don't we normally have a vicinity map that shows improvements with your plan for the area in the future?
I could get one, but I don't have one.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'm looking at the motion that was made by. Planning and zoning and I, I didn't see a current comment or a new comment from Public Works. On the section regarding the water line waiver. I cannot recall, and I'm not saying we never, but I cannot recall us ever waving to and through. And that's what this is, is to and through. It, but, but the, the motion is only requiring stubs. To the infrastructure that's in Locust Grove, but not even an easement through the property. So. If, if you're going to do this, you are waving something we've. I can't recall we've ever waved, but you're going to have to require at least a. A easement through this property for the rear property to be able to connect to the soup, to the water line. In Locust Grove, if that's what you choose to do. My only caution to, to the council is. When this council has chosen to waive something like that for one developer, even if it's just a single family homeowner. We will get numerous requests to waive it for somebody else. So it's not just one homeowner. It is, it is really a precedent setting type of direction that will affect other people, even smaller developers of a one or two lots up. So just something to consider if you want to consider that request.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Just, just one question to Bill. When you're talking about two and three, you're talking about the water, the sewer, both.
Well, our, our code requires both. It requires that they take them both through. So that the next property can get to it. Otherwise they have no access to it. Now, we have held off requiring them hooking up to sewer services until they were available. So until they run in front of the property. We haven't required people bring it to them unless they want to do that. Clearly a, a single lot development like this, it is cost prohibitive to do that. So that's not a problematic. We will create that in the development agreement. That they will do it. And, and we will have a way to trigger that in the future, but. My guess is if it's in the five year work plan to widen Locust Grove, they're not going to build that sewer line until the roads widen because that's where the sewer line is going to go. I have talked about the water, the water, if it's available now, since I believe it is. We would normally require they take the water all the way through.
Correct. The sewer again is 1,400 feet, but the water is directly in that intersection now. So there's a much shorter distance for the water. Than there is for the sewer. There, it really isn't reasonable to expect them to extend a sewer line a quarter mile.
I see Christie's there to tell us when this road is planned or not planned to be built.
Mr. Mayor, yes, this is Christie. I'm someone ACHD. Again, we currently do not have this segment of Locust Grove planned in the 21. The adopted 2125 integrated five year work plan. It is planned to go to three lanes. We're in the process of developing the 22 to 26 integrated five year work plan. And this is one that we're hoping to. At least move into the plan. Likely we wouldn't have a construction year identified, but currently it is not in the integrated five year work plan.
Thank you, Christie. So just my two cents from a practical standpoint is. You know. Trying to make, make the connections is important. But in this case, you're really not going to connect through the next properties more than likely. And so while. At least. Knowing that this road will likely be built in five to six years when, and that will produce the sidewalks. I don't know that makes sense to have them do one. So I would be in supportive of. Not making this connection because it's not going to connect to anything else. It will likely redevelop before then.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Do you feel that way about Locust Grove and Paradise?
I'm just looking at Locust Grove. I'm looking, I'm thinking more along that. Element. Paradise, not necessarily.
Mr. Mayor, I think you and I have kind of drawn the same conclusion. I think I'm, I can get on board with no sidewalks on Locust Grove. But what I envision is a 30 years from now. Was county folks who didn't want to. Have the city come have said, oh, we want to go someplace else. Redevelopment occurs, then we get a little. Little spot of sidewalk along Paradise that, that'll never be built because we didn't require it along Paradise. So. I, I think I can get there on Locust Grove, but I think we've got to have the sidewalk on Paradise.
And from a practical standpoint with the sewer, water. And from a practical standpoint, with the sewer water, would it not go down Paradise if we if this area was likely to ever? I'm just looking to the two and through. What makes sense from our standpoint, I see this more being a not the same, but Meridian Heights style where we're going to go through when, you know, you're taking it through people's property, but you're taking it to it to connect from the street.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, so it definitely would have to go in the right way. Normally is where it would go. So Kyle is on the call, so he would probably be better suited. But I was just concerned about waiving the two and through requirement.
Alan, would you like to speak?
I think I think Bill's enumerated fairly well, Mr. Mayor, Council. And obviously Warren's concerned. If if this property doesn't build to and through, then what will happen when the next properties need water, then they'll get a waiver because water isn't to them. And properties that really need to get off wells and septic will never get off wells and septic. So it without without enforcing the two and through you, you lose the opportunities in the future, which will be there. And the well and septic concept is just not sustainable on these size lots for forever.
Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Chief.
If I can also follow up with what Kyle said, I think the two and through would be important for the fire department as well, as we know, this whole area is rural. So we don't have fire hydrants in that area. And if they're building a six thousand square foot house, a fire hydrant, the nearest, the closest fire hydrant is down down the street, quite a distance. So if we did the two and through, we could at least get a fire hydrant out either on that corner or in on the other property, the east corner of the property that would help us down Paradise Lane in case we did get a structure fire, which we've had fires down that area before. So I I follow what Kyle says as well. Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions? Is the applicant?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Ben Semple with Rodney Evans and Partners, one zero one four South La Point Street, Suite Three, Boise, Idaho. I'm representing the owner of these two parcels. And I guess first and foremost, I want to thank Alan for the presentation as well as his assistance during the process. It's been a long process, almost two years for the property owner. I want to give a little bit of background. Initially, when they purchased this property, they were informed by Ada County that they could consolidate within the the county because they did have a mechanism for that. When they went to apply for that, the county apparently had removed that mechanism from their code and required the owner to submit a subdivision application to consolidate the two parcels within the county. When that subdivision application was submitted to the county, obviously it was transmitted to the city because it's within the area of impact. And the city then identified a single point of connection to an annexed piece of property. The extension of the northern property boundary of the overall two parcels, when it hits Locust Grove, meets a single point of the extension of the south property line of the subdivision that you can see to the northwest. I believe that is Alexandria subdivision. There's a single point of connection at the center line of Locust Grove. That is their path for annexation. Every other parcel, north, south, east and west of these parcels are in the county. Nothing else is in the city. I just want to clarify that the the process, it's been a very back and forth process for this owner. Again, they've gone through about two years of the process now to get to this point to consolidate these two parcels into one for them to build their single family residential home. They are in agreement with the terms and conditions of the staff report, including a development agreement that limits this parcel to a single home construction. The reason that the owner bought this parcel was because it is in the county and they intended to build a single family home for themselves and their family. They wanted to be in the county to be a part of this small county subdivision that does fall within the boundaries of City of Meridian. Ultimately, their their combined parcel would be larger than any of the other parcels in here and contain home, a home that is similar in size to some other ones within that subdivision in the county. We did request a waiver as was indicated by Public Works for that we could apply for a waiver for not only the sewer extension, but the water main extension due to the limited nature of this project. They did grant us our waiver of the sewer extension for a fourteen hundred foot extension of a sewer main. The owner of this property did indicate that they would be they would hook into the the water main that exists in Locust Grove in front of the property to service their home. Obviously, the the city engineer denied the waiver of that extension. That water main extension consists of about two hundred and eighty linear feet of main line to run down Paradise to the eastern property boundary. And I guess it sounds like also the installation of a fire hydrant. So that is fairly cost prohibitive when building a single family residential home. If this was a true redevelopment or something that approached additional density, then I don't think we would be having the same conversation because that is, you know, apparent when you redevelop to increased density that any utilities and other infrastructure are improved in that area. Additionally, sidewalk in this area, just for context, the total length along Locust Grove as well as Paradise would be five hundred and sixty linear feet of sidewalk that currently would connect to a buffered asphalt pathway along the east side of Locust Grove to the north and connect to nothing to the east. There is no sidewalks anywhere within this subdivision. And our opinion is that the installation of sidewalk on the north side of Paradise Lane is going to create some issues with drainage. There's some drainage facilities on Locust Grove. But when you install curb gutter sidewalk along a portion of a roadway that is a rural road section and currently utilizes, you know, roadside swale effectively to handle the drainage. When you're concentrating that into a gutter, it needs to go somewhere. So it's not just a sidewalk installation. It would then be potentially a stormwater facility consisting of an underground seepage bed, something along those lines that would substantially increase the costs of the development of a single family home. We did have some conversations with the fire department and are in agreement with building the driveway to extra specifications to hold a fire apparatus in the event that there is a fire. Ultimately, if it is the decision of the council to require a water main extension, obviously, we would have to agree to something along those lines. Because the the owner wants to just build his house for his family. And we have to have this completed prior to being able to apply for a building permit. There, again, I just want to reiterate, there is a water main in Locust Grove that we could theoretically connect to that's out there to service this home. And we, part of the development agreement is that when sewer is extended past here in Locust Grove, that we take the the future home off of septic and connect it to that sewer main. The, you know, we're we're not proposing any further development or redevelopment of this lot. During the public hearings as well as neighborhood meetings that we held, multiple of the neighbors are very leery of any annexation here. They worry about forced annexation. They're worried about additional density out here or commercial uses. Any of that stuff that we're willing to enter into the development agreement that restricts this property from being developed that way by this current developer, because again, not anything that he wishes to do, plans to do or anything having to do with the project. So I guess our hope was that we could get the annexation approved in order to then consolidate the two lots into a single lot to build a single family residence without the added expense of sidewalk and water main extension for ultimately the service to a single lot with no, again, cost share by anyone to the east. I guess if they eventually redeveloped, then I don't know if there's a payback type of situation where this owner would be able to recoup some of those costs. And I I do understand that typically in development, the developer is required, you know, first in pays for improvements that they don't necessarily recoup costs on. But this isn't a typical development of the property. It's a consolidation and really reduction in what could be done here. So that's kind of our stance, and I would be happy to stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Semple. Well, just one thing as we look at this. When we talk about the curb gutter sidewalk on Paradise, I don't, at least from my perspective, I don't know that you're talking about a full curb gutter sidewalk, but, you know, an asphalt five foot pathway similar to what I've seen in other places. You know, at least from, and I would love for the applicant to talk about that after opportunity for additional questions. But counsel, any additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Question, I think for the applicant, but maybe staff will want to weigh in. I'm sympathetic as to kind of the predicament you're in where the the county's sending you our way. That's what we want the county to do. They recognize that it's simple. It's caused kind of a challenge for your client. From your perspective, if the if the city council were to deny this application, does that open the door for you to go back to the county at that point?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, the county does not currently in their code have a mechanism for the consolidation of these two lots. They are two lots within a platted subdivision in the county. The only mechanism that they have currently in their code is a subdivision process to consolidate. But when a subdivision application goes to the county, it then goes to the city of which they fall within the area of impact. So we've kind of done this back and forth with the county before. We've had multiple meetings with the city as well. And this is really the only avenue we have to accomplish this. And unfortunately, that got us to this point. You know, and we've even looked at a redesign where, you know, there's not the consolidation of the parcels. Unfortunately, having a home on one lot precludes having a an accessory dwell or an accessory structure such as what the my client is proposing with an RV shop or basically large detached garage on the northeast portion of the property that can exist on a separate lot without a primary structure as well, which would then defeat the purpose of building a single family home and an RV structure. I think that might answer your question.
It did. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hovland.
Question. Well, comment first, I I think, Mr. Semple, I wouldn't be surprised if your clients were regretting that they just didn't call us a remodel, keep a wall of the house and build a whole new house behind it and be done with it as as many hoops as they had to jump through so far and not done yet. I want to make sure I understand the water issue. And and you talk about connecting to sewer as well in the future. But that is both of those would be coming off of north, North Locust Grove directly to the house as opposed to coming up Paradise Lane, especially the water. We've talked about in the future, someday there might be a sewer line coming up Paradise, and they would have to tie into that once that's there. Right now, and and staff, Kyle might weigh in on this if if we need to need him to. Instead of running the water line up Paradise and then over to the house, you're saying there's a line already. I think there's a line in Locust, North Locust Grove of just going directly from North, North Locust Grove is, do I understand that correctly?
Sir, he would want to run a service line directly, basically from point A to point B. There there's a line where if you look at the map I have up here, basically stubs right there, I believe, at that intersection. I can let Kyle weigh in. Rather than having to run a main line up Paradise, they want to get a service line and just directly point A to point B right to that house, basically where we're standing right here on Google Maps.
Yeah, if I could, if I could just clarify the the waiver that that city engineer denied was their request to just access the water main that is in Locust Grove. And so what the city engineer is saying is this, this property needs to bring the water from Locust Grove along its frontage along Paradise Lane to the easternmost portion of its lot, like any other subdivision in the city would do and any other house in the city would pay for if it was a new house. It's all baked into the cost of a new house. I I don't agree that this is a cost prohibitive feature to ask for. It probably will cost less than the than the new counters in this house.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hovland.
And Kyle, if I, and to follow up on that, I would understand a service line would be much smaller and less costlier as opposed to running. I don't think the term is main line. That's more of a sewer term, but a a main water line to the easternmost part of the property. Any idea? I I don't recall the distance of that frontage, what that might cost as opposed to just a service line?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hovland, I'd estimate about fifty dollars a foot, so two hundred and eighty linear feet, somewhere around fourteen thousand dollars, and then throw in five thousand dollars for a hydrant. So again, I think it's, I think it's well, well under the cost that this, that lots of features in this house are going to cost. And if if a water main and and on top of that hydrant's not put in, you you're allowing a I don't know what the square footage of this house would be. I'm I'm sure it's over five thousand square feet. You're going to have a a house, the a new house in the city that's built without a fire hydrant within spitting distance anywhere. I just think that's probably not a good precedent.
It would be a six thousand square foot house for clarification.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, I think if you're building what I would consider to be a country estate, it's quite a, it sounds like quite a large house. I'm imagining that the cost to build that house is is fairly expensive. And now that this property will be part of the city, the if there is an emergency, the fire department will have to respond and they need something to hook up to. And to me, I understand the sewer. I kind of consider that one thing. To me, the the water main is important. Maybe there's some wiggle room on the sidewalk. I don't care about Locust Grove if that's going to happen already a different way, but on Paradise, maybe this asphalt sidewalk. I don't know if I have as much energy around the sidewalk piece, but, you know, the fire department's got to respond if there's an emergency and you know, like it or not, sounds like you're going to become part of the city. Welcome to Meridian and we now that you're part of this, you're going to become part of the city, we're going to have to serve you and that includes emergency services. And we've had a lot of incidents with people that have had their own septic. They've maintained them and they've had their own water, and then they've had problems down the road in other subdivisions where they've had to join the city later. So we should just set this thing up for success in the first place.
Mr. Mayor, and I guess multiple members of council, I'm I'm not necessarily disagreeing with what you're saying. I, again, do this a lot and understand the two and through requirements for redevelopment of properties. We were just told that we could appeal the denial of the waiver to extend the water main line from the intersection of Locust Grove down Paradise Lane to the eastern property boundary of the property and then pull a service line off of that. For my client, I had to go through that process because it was indicated as a process that was allowable within code to request that waiver. Ultimately, yes, we will comply with the conditions that city council places on the redevelopment of the property. We were very happy to see a waiver for a fourteen hundred linear foot. We were very happy to see a waiver for a 1,400 linear foot extension of a main line, knowing that we would still enter into a development agreement to run a service line to that line when it, when the main line runs past here. I, we're not debating that aspect of it. Going back, kind of touching on sidewalk. If a sidewalk consists of a five foot asphalt path that's detached from the road, still falling within the right of way, and it doesn't create drainage issues for ACHD or something along those lines that will require substantially more work and expense. Yes, this isn't a small house, but ultimately it's also not an apartment complex that could be built here that would then be spread out over multiple users or even multifamily townhomes, something like that that could be spread out. It's ultimately one individual family that's paying for, for all of that, including the construction of the house that will be a nice, larger home. So I guess we're not necessarily here debating, I guess, kind of what your decision would be, just wanting to lay out a case for that this is not ultimately what could have been brought forth in terms of a redevelopment of the property. Just to, some food for thought for the council. Thank you.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant at this time? I don't know if we even have anybody online who, this is a public hearing, if there's anybody I'd like to provide testimony on this item. You can use the raise your hand function at the bottom of the Zoom platform and we can bring you in. Mr. Clerk, I assume, did we have anybody sign up?
Um, Mr. Mayor, nobody signed up and we've had one or two people in and out since then.
I'm not seeing any raised their hand, wish to testify. So Mr. Simple, would you like to make any final comments?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I guess, you know, we look forward to, my client looks forward to ultimately building a home for his family. And I think that we've kind of laid out what our requests would be and that ultimately we're in agreement with the way the staff report is written and look forward to your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
I do have a question for Kyle regarding the water. You know, this, the, the properties behind this being, you know, rural, we don't see them developing anytime soon. They could stay that way for quite some time, that water line that goes to the eastern edge of the property. It has a fire hydrant, they run a service line off of that. I know in the past, there's been discussions about making sure water circulates. Is that going to be an issue here where it just comes to a dead end? Of course it goes to the house, but there is no circular motion to that tying in elsewhere and flowing through and whatnot. Can, can you comment on that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hogland, that, that could actually be an issue. It may be that although we require the, the main to to go to and through to the eastern portion of the property, we could solve that problem by allowing them to put their service tap on Locust Grove. And that would keep, keep their service tap where there's water flowing, so. Not unsolvable, but good, very good point.
Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Chief.
It does, it does state in the, sorry, Mr. Mayor and council, it does state in the fire code that if a building is brought into an area that, and there's no hydrants nearby, then we do need to add a hydrant in. I was just looking at the code, it says where a portion of facility or a building hereafter constructed or moved into or within the jurisdiction is more than 400 feet from a fire hydrant or on a fire apparatus access road and approved route. Let's see, don't mess up on those before. Oh, hydrants of main shall be provided where required by the fire code official. So if we're not going to do the extension down Paradise, then we at least need a fire hydrant on the corner of the property. And then we'll have to work with Kyle on the modeling to see what the fire flow is going to be for that particular house at 6,000 square feet, we're going to need at least 2,000 gallons a minute for two hours. So we would just need to make sure that we can meet that requirement. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilman Hogland.
Thanks for that Deputy Chief. I, I was wondering about that as we were talking through this is if, if finding out what the width would be when ACHD expands Locust Grove and where the corner would, would likely be and having something there as, and then running the service line from that as opposed to going clear down and then waiting maybe forever for development, still having that fire hydrant. And I'm sure Mr. Simple could sell his client on the fact that there'll be insurance, you know, house insurance savings over time that, yeah, I wouldn't pay for that, but it was, it was, it was, it was a shot. Mr. Simple is, you know, just your thoughts on something like that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hogland, yeah, I, I believe that my client would be in agreement with constructing a fire hydrant at that corner off of the main line that currently exists in Locust Grove, assuming that the modeling comes back that supports the fire flows as required by code as well as installing their service line to their home off of that same main line. I can't imagine that they would be opposed to that.
Thank you, Ben. And, and Mr. Mayor, follow up question for Joe.
That's what I'm hoping.
Deputy Chief, how, how do they determine the fire flow? What does that take to know that there's going to be enough, enough pressure on that? Could you walk me through that?
Sure, typically, sorry, Mr. Mayor and council. Alan, can I share a map real quick?
There you go, Joe.
Thank you. I was going to share Kyle's map, so this kind of shows you where the, the closest hydrant is. So you're welcome, Kyle. Sorry, Mr. Mayor and council, so to, when we find out how big a house is going to be, typically what we do is in appendix B of the fire code, it lists what the fire flow requirements are for a particular size of a structure. So depending on the house and what it is, is basically it's everything underneath the eaves of the house. So the house itself may be 6,000 square feet, but if they have a thousand square foot patio cover and a 500 square foot porch, now the house is 7,500 square feet. And so we'd have to calculate the fire flow off of that. And again, there's a table in the back, in appendix B of the fire code that covers what the fire flow is required to be. And then typically I will work with Kyle and I will say, hey, Kyle, I've got this project that's on the corner of Paradise and Locust Grove, what's our fire flows in that area? And then we can determine whether or not we have adequate fire flow, either by the, the hydrants that are in the area is typically what he goes by with his pressure zones, you know, he's got all this magic that he runs and, and then he can determine whether or not we have adequate fire flow for what's there. If for some reason we do not have adequate fire flow, which we've had some 10,000 square foot houses and some 14,000 square foot houses pop up, then the only requirement after that point is they will have to put fire sprinklers in their house to lower the requirement for fire flow.
Thank you, Chief.
Council, further discussion or is there a motion? Councilman Cavanagh.
We close the public hearing on the Roberts annexation H dash 2021 dash 0013.
Second motion.
Motion, second to close the public hearing, is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Question for, for Alan. Sidewalk requirement. Mr. Mayor brought up, you know, a, a pathway of some sort is, is it, is an approval of a, of a pathway in place of curb gutter sidewalk within code, is that something that we can, we can do?
I'd need to leave it to public works for the curb and the gutter, but you have the option of an attached or a detached sidewalk.
Councilman Cavanagh, I turn your attention to the corner of Victory and Locust Grove, which had, has a black asphalt detached sidewalk type facility on it. And, and I think it's temporary, but I think this is temporary too.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Check at this and this for discussion. Considering all the staff and applicant testimony, I move that we approve file H dash 2021 dash 0013 as presented on the staff report of the hearing date of May 18th. Denying the waiver to connect the water main and requiring a detached asphalt pathway along Paradise. And Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll provide clarification if staff needs that because I realize I may have said I denied the side or the pathway along Paradise, but I'm, I'm in support of the pathway along Paradise, but denying the waiver on, on the water connection. Requested waiver.
We could maybe clarify and say denying the waiver to the two and through requirement for water. Maybe it would be more clear.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as, as Kyle much more eloquently put, also denying the waiver on the two and through element.
I have an emotion and a second. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burr.
We need to discuss, I mean, the fire hydrant issue, is that going to just come along with the water?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
It's my understanding, yeah, that the, the fire hydrant would come along with water.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
Question from maker of the motion, would that, so that would go to the eastern part of the property as, as required and then pulling the line off of that? And the purpose of the paved sidewalk, for lack of a better term, paved path, that is going to go to where?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you, Mr. Hogland, for giving me an opportunity to talk about a pathway to nowhere. As, as we've discussed tonight, well, that will be the only piece will be annexed into the city. And likely that pathway will exist in its current format for quite a long time. I'm supportive of the flexibility to at least get some piece of connectivity. Should we have some piece of infrastructure in place in case a future neighborhood to the east develops. If, if the council is more supportive with requiring a traditional sidewalk curb and gutter, I'm, I'm happy to have that conversation. I think I was just trying to find a, a happy balance.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
Yeah, I, I guess my happy balance was I, I can go along with the required water and, and hydrant, even though there, there could be issues with, with the water quality. But, but the pathway, if there is development in that area in the future, I think the road would be widened, there'll be traditional sidewalk curb gutter type of things. So I, I, I don't see a need for the pathway at, at all. That's where I'm coming from. I, I'm not requiring even more. I just, this is, we're taking a rural area that has existed for quite a while, likely will exist for a while until that point comes when developer comes in and makes them an offer they can't refuse. And then it has a new vision, new plan, but that's, you know, that's just my, my thinking on it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Councilman Hogland, I, I completely get where you're at. I think that we've seen enough applications where I've been on the council saying, man, I wish, I wish a previous council would have, you know, required at least that piece there because now you've got, it's a little bit of patchwork and I figured at least having almost for lack of a word, like a trailhead beginning for what may later come, makes more sense than to try and fix it at a later point in time.
And, and Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
To that point, if you take the five mile path, go up Belano, towards Belano Creek, you'll see this nice 10 foot wide sidewalk coming down from a long 10 mile, make the turn and then you have 40 feet of grass, not connected to anything. So we, 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 we don't know the future, that's the problem. I mean, we try and do our best here and, and sometimes, okay, if it's not there, what's the loss as opposed to they expend the money and do it and it's, it's torn up in the future. You know, I, I, I don't know, you're, you're, you know, your, your motion is, is a good one and there's validity behind it. I just, there's just, yeah, struggle with, with that portion of it, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I'd rather err on the side of having something than, than having nothing in the future if the rest of this develops. I just feel like we've had enough examples of more annexations and neighborhoods like this and I, I wouldn't want to have a piece that doesn't have some sort of connectivity. I feel like this kind of comes along with the territory, like you're joining the city. We expect sidewalks and pathways and it's incongruous with the rest of the neighbors and it's unfortunate Ada County doesn't have their own process for figuring this out, but they don't. And I'd rather, I personally would rather have, have something than not have anything.
And like it or not, I think the subdivision is going to be a one by one process for the city over time. Because Ada County likely is not going to have a great, I don't want to provide services to this infill component. It's the current commission. I believe.
Good question.
Oh, we, yeah, the question has been called. Clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borden, Cavanagh, Schrader.
Aye.
Hogland.
Aye.
Burr.
All ayes, motion carries and the aim is agreed to. Thank you everyone for their time and attention this evening. Next item is ordinances. First up is, or only ordinance number 21 dash 1928, ask a clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's an ordinance related to H 2021 0008 Meridian South Fire Station for annexation of a parcel of land situated in a portion of government lot three of section five township two north range one east Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. And being more particularly described in attachment A and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho. An adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian. Establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 4.00 acres of land from RUT to R8 medium density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County assessor, the Ada County recorder, the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Council, you've heard this ordinance run by title, was there a made like it written in its entirety? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, do we need to do a roll call on that?
You know, we need a motion.
Motion? All right. Councilman Cavanagh.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 21 dash 1928 with suspension rules.
Second motion.
A motion, second to prove item under suspension of the rules, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay, the ayes have it. The ordinance is agreed to. Council, anything on our future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Not a future meeting topic, just a moment of privilege if I can. I just wanted to recognize the passing of a really, really remarkable city employee. You know, we here at City of Meridian are so lucky to have such amazing staff that work here and when, when Barb Holder passed away this week and I was really lucky to work with her as an employee and. I was really lucky to work with her as an employee and she just was such a champion for our city, for our staff, for our mayor and council, both when she was here as an employee and when she left as a. So I just wanted to take a quick moment to recognize her and to thank her posthumously and her family.
And for those who are interested, there is Service Memorial tomorrow, 11:30 at Corvado Funeral Home. It's either virtual or in person if you are interested in attending. Appreciate your comments. So with that, have a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
Move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second, the motion.
Motion, second, to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, the ayes have it, we adjourned.